You have to go into the committee.
Yes, I'm on that.
All right, well, I want that.
I'll let you.
Probably like tell my.
I'll let you.
Oh, you just go through and report.
Good.
That is definitely.
Yeah.
Really good for you. You've really got enough thought.
I think a little.
Oh, okay.
There's not bad coverage.
Oh, yeah. You dropped off all of them.
No, it's not like a huge bed.
Yeah.
Uh, during ABC.
Joe, I like the new logo.
Next one's next year.
That's actually my old logo. I just forgot to use it.
We really like that puppy. It's really cute.
She is a thirteen-year-old beagle, so she's not a puppy.
Oh.
That's it, you know, I'll drive your puppy.
Oh, this is the wrong call.
Doctor, we need to open.
Okay.
We're not.
You know, trying to block. And it's always covered. Oh.
Got anything?
Oh, I can't figure one. But they want to.
Not more.
You know, I mean.
Nothing more than there.
Look.
And then either way, they're trying to.
Thank you.
Oh, great. You know, I was hoping you'd hand this out. Thank you.
It was interesting, that. People still, people still always remember that. And they still, yes, thank you.
You got the whole year on here. You got the whole year on here, though, right?
I got two of them. I got the one that's got just December. Both of these get sent to the bill, but yeah, it's got, uh, the first page is December's projects and then, um, second page is the full year, so.
Thank you.
I just want everybody to see it, so that's what gets sent every month.
This, I have that already recorded. And I already have that ready to record. Here she is, turn the card.
Shelley, did you want to prepare? To prepare the bedlacks prepared since you did that.
Oh, yeah, no, um.
Do you have an actual?
I do, yeah, I got an actual. You know, obviously, I don't have a very clean.
I've already seen it, but okay.
Hello?
All right, you guys ready?
Hey.
Everybody else ready?
Everybody here okay?
Yep, I can hear you.
Black Earth's North Board meeting Tuesday, February second, two thousand twenty-one. Called order at six P M. Uh, roll call, please.
All right. We have James Coyle.
Here.
Mitch Hudson.
Here.
Scott Patchen.
Here.
Jared Gramerson.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Troy Uther.
Here.
And Josh is going to be up.
We have a quorum. Please stand for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Through the posting, a copy of an notice for this meeting was delivered on January twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one. Back to Star News, posted at the Black Earth Minville Building and posted on the Black Earth webpage, posted at the Black Earth Post Office, and back to posting to the State Bank of Cross Plains, the Black Earth Ranch. To the posted agenda item four, public comment. Is there anybody from the public that would wish to comment at this time?
I don't know whether we.
David?
Hello. Um, my name is David Stanfield. I live in the town of Vermont. While I'm undertaking a little journalistic project of doing a description for my Vermonters of various important services in the Black Earth area. Uh, I'd just like to tell you what the status of the recordings are. Uh, I finished a report, a three-page report on the Black Earth Electric, a draft. Troy, Shelley, John, and Lydia have a copy of that. Uh, with the, um, some interesting findings over the twenty, last twenty years. Number of customers have increased from a thousand to about fourteen hundred. And yet the consumption of electricity has remained the same, so Black Earth customers are becoming more efficient. Very nice, good news. Um, twenty years, the rate people pay for electricity doubled. Um, but that's a question of cost, the cost of living increases. At the same time, the rate is a question that how to, how to control and how to minimize increases. Uh, I've just noticed some things. One, Black Earth depended on what alliance charges. That's what it has to pay for electricity, so you have to be attentive to alliance petitions for increases. The grid losses are low. Try to keep them as low as possible. Administrative and maintenance savings, very efficient, seems to me, efficient arrangement with the Vanguard and Height Mezzo Electric. Then the fourth thing that could be done is, um, invest in producing your own electricity. Talked about this, you could produce a silver plus storage facility or as possible, total give to that is a lot less of cost of what the land charge. So anyway, those are just the points that came out of the report. The other institutions, EMS District One, uh, general draft reports can give it to Jim, uh, Jim Wick. I'll be doing, uh, Fire Department, Black Earth and Mount Or, Mount Orby EMS combination. Finally, I'll be doing a report on the library, Black Earth Library. Um, on that topic, just wanted to, uh, say what a nice parade we had in Black Earth on Saturday for our departing librarian. Um, and I want to applaud this board for supporting and being attentive to the library board's uh, financial needs, administrative needs, and audit needs, including coordination of the library board. How you do that, so it's a very good sign. One of the signs of the parade was a great library made of great village. So I think it's a, it's a goal that, uh, I think we all share. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, David. Any other comments from the public? Agenda item five, live a discussion action on clearing Maple Street final assessment. Brian?
Um, what we got for folks tonight is the final assessment report for the work on clearing Maple. Uh, just a way of keeping track, uh, the preliminary assessments were sent out earlier in the process, late summer, and give it all the property owners. Uh, what we do on all the assessment reports is remove all the assumptions, true that up with actual measurement, actual cost on the project, remove contingencies, and I'll then come out with the final report. So, uh, what you've got in front of you is the final report, based on actual as-built quantities. Uh, we do have final measured quantities for all the things that are assessed related to those scripts and gutters, driveway draft restoration, kind of gravel underneath.
So I'm just one, one quick question. When I was going through it, so the people that come in and about to finish work, curb and gutter, make sure all that, that those are all estimated at the time that you campaigned, I'll say, proposal. So it's kind of like this? And what you're saying is then when the project is complete, you go back out and take this measurements and give us this?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that's how the contracts are set up also. Uh, the bids are taken based on quantities we measure on the computer. And that way, if walls, you're out there and you say, you know, it really makes more sense to go another foot at ten speed to, to get to that next crack in the asphalt.
Gives you those.
It gives you the flexibility a lot in the change where this, uh, what's done in the unit price contract and that's how almost literally every project that the village has done. And other units are very, very difficult. And the assessments are done the same way. Uh, in the event, uh, it does give flexibility for folks if they want to widen their driveway and we have a square foot price that they can just add.
Right.
Uh, so for tonight, uh, what we've got for you is the final report. The final numbers actually came in just a tick underneath the preliminary assessment amount, which is good. Uh, the only thing left to do is to approve the reports and also determine what kind of repayment plan the board would allow for folks to pay this back. Generally, in the past, we have allowed for a repayment plan and based on a three-year size.
Based on three years?
Yeah. Three years at an interest rate that usually is kind of what, what your borrowing hat plus a little is in the interest, but, uh, total year call.
Center Street we did zero percent.
You what?
Center Street we did not, uh, tack on until.
Okay. Which is good.
Well, there's a couple of places that got hit pretty hard. Um, uh, I don't know, almost six thousand dollars, seven thousand dollars, that's, that's tough to count. So, yeah, I'm also giving people some time to get that squared away. What do you think, Aye? Is that worse than three years' interest free?
Yeah. Um, payment would start even after completion, as we're typically, we're not.
No, they, they, they actually, payments have already started. We do have one, uh, property owner who has made a payment. Um, and we, even with Center Street, people are making payments every month. We have, um, uh, bring us something every month. We keep track of all of that, of course, so.
But typically, they don't even start it, right? What do you think we do this year?
Now, we're going tax time, right?
No, it's, you know, if you set a three-year term, it's at the end of the three years, whatever's not paid goes on to the tax roll.
But starting at twenty twenty-one, what's, what's our?
They can start at whenever.
I know they can, but what's our, when, when does our three years start?
No.
Twenty twenty-one.
End of this, the tax year of the end of this year is when it starts, yeah.
Sorry.
Okay.
Do we need a motion to get that done? I would make a motion that we grant these people that are being assessed this money for the, uh, Cleary Avenue Maple Street utility improvements, three years' interest, interest free in order to pay their, uh, you know, amount.
I'll second.
Motion by Scott and second by Mitch. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The board? Open that to the chairman. Agenda item, anything else, Brian, that you, a project or anything?
Uh, nothing actionable, just everybody's aware, uh, the grass needs to grow. And, uh, that, just to put it out there, folks are listening at home. It takes time for that dirt to warm up enough to give that grass a real solid run, so, um, we, we generally tell people, you gotta wait till really June first to know for sure that grass is gonna pop. It doesn't take that long for it to warm up. Um, all of that is part of, part of the project. We'll be walking in with Matt this spring to see if there's any concrete repairs that are necessary. And to be kind of surprised if there's none.
There is, yeah, a few. We did get a punchless name of some items, um, and like I said, going back to the grass, there's a one-year warranty, so I mean, there's nothing by fall. You know, we can have some restoration done later this year, yes, to the inside the warranty issues.
Oh, for sure, for sure. And then, of course, the surface layer asphalt. So we'll meet the max in this, uh, spring, summer. Other than that, I'm straight.
June first, not that by.
Yeah.
To meet the, uh, grant or, or R and P, right?
It can be paved and paved, so, uh, that next pay request would be it, but that's, still keeps that one-year warranty going. Um, I didn't take a look at it yesterday. It was kind of melting off a little bit and it's draining how it's, how it's supposed to.
Brian?
Thank you.
Five, we discuss an action on Black Earth Elementary School. Shelley, do you have any updates?
Uh, the only update I have is tomorrow, um, one of the firms I contacted, um, some listen, their diligence will be going over there. I'll meet them at the grade school. Uh, Matt's gonna join us as well to take a look through it. That's how it's, as far as I know.
Some interesting survey comment.
Yeah. Yeah.
Does anyone else on board have any thoughts going moving forward?
Has, has anybody contacted M T C about a West Campus?
I mean, not.
There was, there was interest a while ago at one time.
Well, I, I guess my thought is I, um, my opinion, since the school, a lot of the school property includes the ball diamond, we need to kind of take an active role. So I don't know how we want to do that if we want to push some ideas to Shelley if we want to create a subcommittee. Uh, I don't know how the board would like to go forward with that, but I think it's in our best interest to maybe try to leave and push on some of this. And I don't, I think the school board's even waiting, kind of, for us. They don't per se have ideas, and I know, and they're looking for, um, whether we're interested or not interested.
At, at least in the ball diamond portion of it. I, I know they, Jordan had mentioned spring or early summer as kind of a drop-down timeframe for them to know from the village, because then we're gonna get down to a wire.
Well, I think we need to decide.
So I don't know how we want to go forward with that, any ideas? Do you want a subcommittee? Do we want to?
Well, I particularly don't care for the fact that they didn't deal with it in, in the, uh, the actual, uh, you know.
And pre-planning and?
Pre-planning on it. I mean, all of a sudden, it just falls here. And on top of it, they want to go for a full-blown auditorium. So pick your hook, pick your poison, you know, that's, there's a lot of tax dollars involved there. So, I mean, even the cost to demolish and get the asbestos out of that building and, even if we were just to try to fix the roof, they say it's a million dollars. And I agree, you know, yeah, things can be done, but, well, the laundry list that's out there right now and people saying, oh, the taxes are so high. You know, I, I really don't know where, where I sit on it yet. I, I don't know if I want to give the school an answer on it yet. I think it's more there, uh, you know, we should tell them that our interest lies here, just in the state. This is what we'd like to see. Not going to be that hard to do. You're after the ball field, right?
Yeah, that's the thing.
And we need to take it in chunks, ball field and then no make.
Yeah.
That's my question.
Well, I think we should ask, what is, if we want just the ball field, what is it? If we want just, you know what I mean? I, I, you know, the problem is, it's already a huge cost to the taxpayers to move the school and to build all this and to create another huge cost to taxpayers for demolition and remodeling or, or something that there's no payback is, is very, I mean, now you're double, double dipping on the taxpayers and that's just horrible. Um, although then you got to protect it against things you don't want to see there too, you know, because, so I mean, it, it's a, it's a fine balance. It, it's not a good spot to be in.
That's exactly how I feel.
I mean, if, if, if Black Earth would take it over and use it for community center, it still costs a million bucks to, I mean, that, if the school can't afford it, well, how can we afford it, right?
So, it's not that uncommon to watch these buildings just fall into utter decay and decay and, because nobody wants to owe the money to do it. So unless we have complete community support, you know, referendum line.
Well, that, that might be a good point too, right?
You know, I, I don't think we should make the decision. We should decide what, what we're after and then put it out there on referendum and say, this is what it's gonna cost, this is what it's gonna increase your taxes to if we do eight weeks. I don't know if it takes a subcommittee to, to get that together.
Well, as the referendum goes, they, we have to have, if we're gonna do that, we have to notify the county we're gonna do that within seventy days minimum of it getting on a ballot. So right now, we're past, probably April, but, um.
I don't think we're gonna worry about that. We have another one coming up, one to Mexico.
Here.
Well, that's fine. I think we can let it sit down. I, I mean.
So I, I think we should explore the ball field option. I really do.
If it doesn't give us much, seventy days, I mean, if that's already expired and we can't get it on referendum for the public to vote on, then I don't think, you know, we should be taking any other action than saying this is where, where we want to be when this.
And there's probably vested interest from the school to keep it as a ball diamond. I, because they use it too, so they, they might want to work with us on that part of it. I, I think we should take care of that part and explore the other part and, and just see what our options are with them and see what their thoughts are, right? I mean, you got to have the conversation first before you start negotiating.
So, are you on that board? Are you on the?
I'm on the school board.
Cool.
We're discussing on the E D C, you know, a bit, and, and Jordan's part of the.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I, I agree with Mitch, you know, uh, we don't know, we don't know. And if we just sit around and wait, then, you know, seventy days is gonna come and go and then another seventy days is gonna come and go. I think, I like the idea of getting a referendum out there and seeing what the village as a whole thinks. But we also got to know what our options are and be able to present those options to the village. So I, I think we need to, I, I don't think just sitting and waiting, uh, to the spring. I, I think we need to move sooner than that.
Well, conversations don't hurt anybody, right? It's called communication.
Well, I understand. The school board doesn't have any ideas. They're waiting.
I think they're kind of waiting to see what we want.
They're waiting for somebody to come to them. They didn't, they didn't have this pre-planned notion of what to do, priorities, if they're in the past.
Well, I, I think we should go to them at least with the ball field for now with options of doing other things as at time of.
We, we need to come to them with something.
Yes. So is that an economic development thing or is that a subcommittee?
Could be. Um, particularly, we only have two board members on that committee, but, um, I don't care which way.
Economic development is finally, I, that's really what it is.
I just wanted to add, um, two things also. Um, I contacted Madison Development Corp. They mostly do. They've got eleven point five million dollars that they invest, um, and in infrastructure such as workforce development, housing, um, and other community infrastructure. And then I also contacted WEDA and they, um, provide support to communities for infrastructure development. And they have a special program for rural communities. Um, so I'm waiting, um, to hear, uh, get some more information about what they do and how they assist. Um, but I think those are two ways to dive in with a subcommittee, having some other, you know, you're talking about other options. I agree, definitely involving the public in a referendum, definitely that the public is part of this narrative. It's for the community and they need to weigh in. That's an absolute. But that we have, um, kind of all of our irons in a fire, what if this, what if that? And kind of visualize what that looks like with these different development corporations, uh, this type of nonprofit del, development corporation on Avenue and WEDA assisting the other for rural communities.
And that's, that's one of the reasons I think economic development should do it.
Right.
You know, there's, there's certain organ, there's certain things you want, there's certain things you don't want. And then you got to weigh the options, right?
Sometimes, um, Mary, these, these, these organizations you've contacted, they're, they're all nonprofits? Is, is that what you said?
Um, the Madison Development Corporation is a nonprofit and they are in charge of the money from the, that was given to the county, eleven point eight five million, I believe it is, for, um, mostly they are doing, um, workforce housing development. So that's, you know, adding additional housing to solve the workforce housing crisis in Dan County. Um, that doesn't have to be the only way that they contribute. They also do infrastructure, um, development loans. And then, uh, for WEDA, they have a specific program, that's a Wisconsin, uh, program. They do a specific program for rural infrastructure development. So I don't know if there's money per se for free. I'm waiting to hear back, but these are the ways that you can approach such a thing as a community center or developing that area or possibly even taking, knocking it down because it would be a blight. I don't know. I mean, but I started the conversation and then with COVID, you've got to wait for everybody to get back to you, you know, because they're working from home most likely. So it's kind of a slow process. But it would certainly come in front of the economic development if that's where this is gonna go. And I do fully support a subcommittee, um, looking into this and, and kind of, uh, providing some background information, you know, so that it can come to the E D C for a looksee. Does that make sense? You know, just to make the process more efficient.
That's kind of the E D C's job, right? So why double do the committee? Let's see what they can do. So, what do we?
We'll tap the, uh, E D C.
Well, I'll make a motion that we pass it to the E D C, um, to look at the ball field and other options for the building or not, um, based upon the recommendations.
Okay. For a second?
I'll second that.
Uh, the motion by Mitch and second by James. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ball? Motion passes. Thank you. Agenda item five, discussion action on certification of village ordinances.
Yeah, so.
What? Tell me to move it? All right.
So, um.
I'll say, I'm still, um. Okay. Um, those four meetings, we were second, twenty twenty-one.
All right, so General Code has submitted us a proposal, uh, back in July of last year as we were getting ready to do our budget, um, workshop. And, uh, they had estimated a cost of fifty-one ninety-four to recodify our village ordinances. General Code is who we have had our ordinances with and did the recodification back a number of years ago. This did make it into the budget for this year and was approved to move ahead with it. But we also talked about the university year, um, group taking this on as one of their projects. Um, we've had enough conversations about our ordinances needing work. And I'd really like to move this forward and get this taken care of. You know, whether you want university year or general code to move ahead with this is in front of you right now. I tell you, General Code, um, it'll take about two to three months for them to go through, add in supplements, do editorial and the legal analysis of our ordinances before they are final and come back. They would work, of course, with our committees and boards as they go through the process. And of course, university year, their timetable was longer because of the food. So I am asking this board to consider the recodification of our ordinances.
Can we, the top five? Can you name the top five?
Or just that you'd like to see re, you know, read on?
Well, there's a lot of discussion on our parking regulations as one of them, and as that goes, there's about three.
Vehicles.
Yep.
Non-licensed vehicles.
Yeah.
Um, parking.
We know this got caught by this company when we did it last.
Yeah, it was.
It was caught.
Yeah.
Well, then, well, how come we have to update?
That, that was done in two thousand, probably.
Two thousand.
Two thousand and one.
Well, and those things aren't, still don't hold today?
Well, we've added, sometimes what has.
Things can flip now.
We've added some without realizing what, what was in the code, we did this outside of.
And I'm, and I'm not so sure that there still was a mix-up back then, but they're only doing based off what committees and that tell them to go.
So what we're saying is the police officers can't write tickets because of some of the ordinances that have been changed by the board over the years.
I don't think it's that they can, it's.
Well, which one they write it on.
Finding what ordinance did follow.
Right.
Well, they have a time.
Last time they, they took parts of ordinances, so I think that's the main.
It's been through the feces and, and, you know, all that.
It's been twenty years, it really has, isn't it?
But do you really think that the expense is necessary in this year? I don't know, I mean, can, can we get by another year?
Are they gonna be looking at all the ordinances?
Yes.
Yeah, they will, they will do a comprehensive review of all of our ordinances.
So some of our ordinances do say stuff, like, uh, one particular instance for towing, it had to be towed to the Black Earth facility, and there isn't. So we don't have anymore, it's just, it's stuff like that.
And we can't designate that parking lot as one?
No.
Without, without going in and getting recodified?
I think, I mean, because.
They have a legal person that can make that recommendation, if it needs to be, that, the big part of the problem is, is if we make it too comprehensive, it also gives loopholes.
That's, my whole point is, you know, it should be discretion of the police officers if they can't find one.
Well, half the time they don't know which one to go to, because there's so many that conflict with others.
Well, they go down, they go down and read basel, and then they come back up and hand us two sheets.
Yeah.
You know, I don't like that.
Yeah.
I just don't think that that's fair, so, you know, should we spend the money, or should we just stick with our ordinances, or if you really think that it's a necessary thing, so I, I.
I, I know a lot of the ordinances and they really conflict.
You do, and it's been seventeen years.
Yeah, I know, I was on the door and we had happened before, and it's a lot more money than this.
Well, I think there's too far, I don't think this, there, it's my opinion though.
I think it was like fifteen thousand last time, if I remember it.
Well, I don't think this is the final bill when you're all set and, uh.
They have it, they're giving, huh?
Yeah, but, but, uh.
I sure, I sure, what if we got budgeted?
For budgeting purposes.
I know, but, but if you re, I think then they present, but if you wanna change what they present, then when they're done, you gotta go.
Well, but they're already gonna work with committees, so there should be a final before they present, right?
But we need to be prepared for this too, then, then the police committee's got all, the officers gotta make a list of what's confusing, what they want to, and we go when.
And, you know, we can change some of that too ourselves, but the problem is, to get through all those ordinances would take a long time, because you can only get through so many in a meeting, right?
And how many of them are?
And nobody can agree, I mean, that's the problem with boards, everybody has a different opinion, half the time nobody can agree on it.
How many of them though are real problems, you know?
Yeah. Well, when people fight the tickets, it's one of the problems, well, this does that, well, this does that, this.
Are they going?
I got a question, um, sorry, do the, the attorney still has to look it over after the, any company or whomever we use to do the recod, the attorney?
Our attorney would not have to look it over.
No, they have an attorney as part of the team that does that for us, Mary.
But they recommended that in their paperwork here, I believe.
We have an editorial.
The official, including the village attorney, will have the final decision-making authority.
So our village attorney is gonna be involved?
Could be.
So, so the call.
More than what's on this.
But who do all, who else are we gonna send this to? Does this have to go to Dan County?
No, no.
To, for, or anybody else?
Nope. Not at all.
Well, it's your decision, what I wanna avoid is having meetings where we're discussing ordinances repeatedly and not getting anywhere.
And it's happened a lot in police committee.
It's, it's happening with, yes, it just happens a lot. I, I agree with performing this, but I think we need to do some more work on our end to make sure that what they do is what we want when they're all done.
It's gonna take a lot of work on our end.
Yeah, we need to make sure that the ordinances we wanna address get addressed, they're gonna take everything up to its turn.
How many ordinances do we have on the books?
A lot.
So if we all took a copy of the ordinances and decided to sit down and go through and read, as we probably should, going like this or seeing, what is that in there for? Um, I don't know if that helps or doesn't help.
Well, in ordinance, I mean, some of them, actually, we need to change some of our.
Just, just look at it.
They reflect with the law, like.
It should be, if police officers, you know, police officers have enough to do without having to go look up a code they know in a vehicle, it's been sitting there for three weeks or six weeks, let them fight the damn ticket, you know, it, it's gonna cost us twenty thousand dollars on that, just all done. That's just my, that's what it was last time, I think, started around fifteen, but I think it ended up about twenty. And in the year of the COVID, I don't know, it was just paperwork I think we could put off, that's my own opinion, just my opinion.
So if we.
I have another question too, oh, I'm sorry, was that you, Jared?
Yeah, I, just real quick, so if we do pay this fifty one hundred and ninety four, uh, you know, and we get our, our book and everything, we, does that mean it's like set in stone at that point, or we can still go back and, if we don't agree with whatever they said, we can go, still go back and debate it and, and do our due diligence and change it to what fits better for us, right? We don't necessarily have to pay them to do that.
That's correct.
Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
Maybe, maybe we should actually ask for a list of actually ordinances we need to look at specifically and figure out how many there are first.
Ask for what the ordinance is related, who are you gonna ask that?
I can think about ten right offhand, but.
We have to know what we wanted to make sure what's addressed, that we do, we need, we can't.
We need to know the final cost.
Yeah.
Well, and remember the last time what we did was basically adapt Madison, Wisconsin laws, we put them right here, just like that for twenty thousand dollars, which I thought was a mistake back then, but I'd say, um, we're not Madison, Wisconsin, Black Earth.
God, I have a question, when this was done, uh, that many years ago, was it taking it from a different company, or did we have something, I mean, does General Code like start from scratch with ours?
They started from scratch.
You know, the first time they worked with the village was.
They started from scratch.
And that's why it cost them much, they had a lot more to do, and when they.
I mean, just to add.
What you're saying is the general, okay, if I understand your thinking, the general code must have.
They already had, did them.
They already, yeah, they already did it for us.
Same company, right?
Okay.
But I think what we need to ask is we need to ask this proposal, and then go to our attorney and say, for you to review these, what's it gonna cost us? And then go back to General Code and say, once we give you changes, and once our attorney has some changes, what's this gonna cost us in the end? And then we, we'll have a true number, and then I think we, I'd feel more comfortable going ahead with it if I knew that.
I don't wanna see it getting tripped up going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, is that how they make this?
Because that could be a thousand dollars, or it could be five thousand, I don't know, right? So, I think that's fair.
I have a question also, um, the recod would need to cover our building codes, right? I'm looking at all of our ordinances right now, we've got a hundred and seventy-two pages, um, and it goes from one and kinda skips around and then goes to about, it ends at about three hundred, in the three hundred mark, and there's sub, you know, of course, there's categories within that too, so roughly that's what we're looking at. Um, but I, I don't see anything here that's that, um, kind of exact, uh, more specific to our building codes, would we need to do those at the same time?
Well, I, I can answer that.
Okay, because they're in state codes.
I know very well, so the state statutes override a lot of ours, but a lot of our building codes, since they were written like COM fifty, COM whatever, COM thirty, have all changed the SPS codes and that, they all need to be updated, and that's part of the codification, they look through and say, oh, COM fifty's not COM fifty anymore. You need to, that's part of this, that's part of this, and that is all out there.
It's not like we have to redo a whole big thing on building.
Yep.
Uh, inspections.
No, they just changed the.
Referencing to state codes is what lands up.
You know, our building codes, it used to be, it used to be COM fifty through fifty-six or fifty-four, now it's SPS whatever, and they have changed, and so does the law, so you need to make them reflect that. So that's part of it.
So there, are you?
And that was included in this price then, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's part of the codification, correct.
That is part of this five thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars?
Yep.
Alright, was it worth tabling this or postponing this till?
If you postpone it.
I would say, yeah. I'd say we table it until we find out more.
We're gonna make a motion to bring it back.
Okay, so I, I'm gonna make a motion, we go ahead and table this until we know information, know more information, and then we'll, uh, make a motion to bring it back at that time.
I'll second. A motion by Mitch, second by George to table this, discussion till we have more information, any more discussion on that? Are we gonna set a timeline, or just more information, we need to take one down the road, or. Let's take care of it as soon as possible.
I'll probably have it before the end of the week, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ball? Motion passes unanimously. Agenda item five, E, discussion action, village hall furnace.
I can take that, yeah, um, I think everyone should have got the four quotes, uh, for the furnace with the summary report, um, Wright Mechanical, which is who Scott Patchen had recommended, um, actually was a little bit cheaper. Um, we still have heat in here right now, so it's not a rush, but it is in a, a bypass mode, so I don't think you wanna wait too long on getting another unit. Wright's has got kind of the same warranty quote as everybody else, basically, so.
Wow, he can tell you that, I come, I highly recommend him, I mean, you remember, uh, the, well, all he's done for this village after the flood, and, I mean, that guy, literally, helped save this village.
Yep, yeah, and that's totally fine, um.
I was glad to get his head in here.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, um, the only thing I would recommend with anybody that we do decide to go is looking at the other units, as long as they're here, you know, just doing a cleanup or a checkup on the other two units, you know, spent a couple of years, that's not in any of the quotes, but they're here already, so you're not paying that service charge, so it's probably gonna be, you know, a couple hundred dollars at most, you know.
And that, the, the other service that came and got this one running from SOC?
Yep.
They didn't go around any of the others when they were here?
Correct, yep, they just did the ones, the one that was broke at the time.
Um.
And so there would be a bill from them for that initial service cost, but yet Wright Mechanical is still a hundred and fifty dollars cheaper.
Well, I think Randy, I don't know if you can ask him, but, you know, I, I think we take a look at it.
Yeah, I think he'd be fair, except I don't think there's any huge markup or cost, so.
The guy runs with a little over here.
Um, I will point out that the Harker, or the Modern Heating Proposal and the Wright Proposal, one's a Carrier, right, ninety, they're both ninety-five percenters.
Yep.
Uh, Carrier, Carrier and Bryant are the same company.
Exact same, yep.
Um, and then the other one, um, Baybrook is a ninety-six point five percent, so it is a little more efficient.
Yep.
Um.
Um, Modern's was just the base furnace price I put in there, they had all kinds of options of April Air, you know, higher efficiency cleaner, filters and such like that.
Yep.
So I just tried to keep them all the same.
Baybrook's warranty was one of them.
Harker's warranty is the best.
Yes.
Yeah, Baybrook's is only one year, one year.
Yep.
Most time it's one year, plus so much on parts, depending on what the.
And that one percent efficiency, I, you know. So I would move that we pay Baybrook for their service call of one thirty-nine ninety-five, an award bid for the furnace to the low bid of Wright Mechanical for twenty-eight hundred dollars, twenty-eight hundred and fifty dollars uh, to be installed as soon as possible.
I'll second.
Would you like to also put the cleaning, the maintenance, would you want?
We have.
And if you don't, yeah, I can just have.
Let, let's get that in there, and then when we got him in the door, I'm sure we can walk him around and take a look.
Perfect, can do.
Alright, a motion by Scott, and second by Mitch, to accept the, um, Wright Mechanical bid, any discussion on that?
I have a question, um, it shows under modern heating and cooling that there's a two hundred dollar rebate, uh, rebate, uh, focus on energy, is there any way the, or did we ask, would there be a rebate on one provided by Wright?
Um, it depends on the efficiency based, uh, we probably already have ninety-five percent efficient furnace, so you're putting in the same efficiency, there probably would not be a rebate, we could ask though, right? Um, yes, I don't know if Modern could say that or not, right, based on.
Right.
I'm going off the bids that are presented here tonight.
It's still a lot cheaper, right, so. But it are a number of focus on energy, so it doesn't hurt to.
We'll have to do another polar vortex in the next week.
Yep.
I'm just a little concerned that, you know.
Yeah, Mary, I, I think for the, to get the rebates, the installer has to be part of that program.
And I think he is, actually.
Okay.
I think he is.
Okay.
So I will call him and.
Any other discussion?
Worth asking, thanks, Mary.
All in favor?
You're welcome.
Aye.
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 Ball? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Matt's taking care of that, uh, agenda five, E, discussion action on new truck signage.
Yes, um, I got some new looks, I don't know what you guys' thoughts are.
That one you guys had here tonight, that was considerably cheaper than the other ones, wasn't it?
No.
This one here?
That one was a little bit cheaper, yep, yep, um.
That's all reflective, right?
Yes, yep.
Is that high vis also, reflective?
Yep, reflective, high vis, yep, yep, so, anywhere if we went with just the original sticker like we have, a hundred and seventy-five dollars, and if you did the max, you know, the green reflective, running the black down on the rocker panels, kinda protecting it from chips and stuff like that, you're running up to six forty-five. Uh, some of the other ones, you know, were nine eighty-five and three eighty for the original, um, the cheaper one that was the third quote that just came in today, uh, was who Sean has recommended, uh, company on SOC.
Reflective?
What's that?
Is it reflective?
Yes, yes, yeah, he's got different prices for reflective and non-reflective down in here, um. So it's whether or not we wanna go with a totally new look logo, or keep the old logo, we could change the color of the old logo to what you guys are thinking, I guess my thought was new logo with the green, to be brighter, high vis, reflective.
Trump's team has the green.
Depends what time of season you look at it.
This was discussed at Public Works, and we pushed it back to the board, because if there was a color change or a logo, it needs to be a board decision.
Yep.
And, um, one concern at Public Works was the green looked too much like the new fire truck, but in that defense, that, that was more looked towards our community colors with, with the heights.
Colors, yes.
And that's one of the reasons for the, and it's really not the same color, but.
I would get it.
Matches Vanguard a little bit of.
Right, I would get a quote. Matches Vanguard, the other thing is, the only other, you know, better than blue would be orange if the fire truck thing was a big problem, so.
I guess I was going, like I said, for the fire truck color, I thought it was somewhat, like I said, community colors representing, much more noticeable out on the roads in the snow, such like that, um.
So I actually voted for an orange fire truck.
Jared, Mary, did you guys get the final?
I just looked at the orders down here thinking, I'll ask them.
Yeah, I got them, thank you.
I got the packet, was that part of the update, then?
Yes, the last one, a quote came with the update this afternoon.
Right, I have it here.
One of the quotes was cutting-edge designs, that's who did the squad car, but they were also the highest as well. Mueller's is out of Barnabell, they did District 28's or Mesa EMS rigs. They've done some stuff for Mesa Fire Department.
Does this design change, change in all of our, do we have to change paperwork and all the doors? Do they have letterhead or performance training announced? Change to match, or do we use this logo?
I was just going logo on the truck, yeah. That's all I was doing, was just changing the truck, not everything.
I wouldn't change our logo, I'm just a village.
Just change our logo.
Well, I don't mean our village sign, but I mean if we use this, I mean, I guess the other thing is, well, how come with our, we have a symbol for our village, why is that different than what's on our letter? Different than what's on our truck, different than just being out of one look?
Or, but you can also remember, if you take your village logo, you could make, that doesn't have to be blue. You could make it green or orange for high visibility too.
I don't really care about the logo. You know, the only black earth in the world, or B.E., they need one of them, I don't care. As long as it says Village of Black Earth, Public Works, and it stands out so that people don't get hurt, that's my only concern. I don't take a care less about the logo.
I think the top one's easier to read.
It is.
Bottom one, probably, because that's...
Yeah, so they carry that, yep.
I agree that the color should be something that really stands out. We just, I think, safety, safety, this green concerns me because it's so, it looks so dark in the image. I don't know if anybody else feels that way. The blue is something we've had. It just looks darker.
I have a reflective sign, Mary, out on 78th that has green in it, and at night it really does light up.
I'd go for the same color, similar to Sean's hat.
Yeah, it does really light up. It'll catch your eye.
And how about orange, if you, if you had orange versus that, those are my two kind of choices, orange or the green?
Yeah, orange would probably be something similar to our big orange truck, actually, or Dane County Highway, Omaha Orange, it's called, if you wanna be specific. But...
But Scott, you're saying that the green is really standing out, Matt, you think that the green really stands out best?
Yep, I was shooting with the green. I kinda like how Mueller's design is, with the stripes on the side of the box being green, black, green, their lettering, I kinda like a little bit better. But talking with signature signs, he said he could move all that stuff around to match Mueller's type thing. There really wouldn't be much of a price difference.
And Chevron on the back is important for safety.
Yep.
Yes.
So I, it doesn't matter to me what color, but I think I'd rather see a green or an orange than the blue for visibility reasons.
You're supposed to go in?
I'd say green to go somewhat with, I mean, it's not gonna match Vanguard's.
I'll go with the, the advice of the Public Works Director.
Yep, it wouldn't match Vanguard's color to a T, I'm guessing, unless we're gonna rip a sticker off of yours to match it, but... So, I guess I'm shooting for green, unless anyone's got any objections to that?
Better to keep orange, but...
I didn't, the green, it's the...
So you're talking about just...
It is the logo on that one.
Okay.
More hop art there.
If it's the logo, we want that one on top.
Okay, perfect.
For visibility.
You have a preference?
With signature signs?
Do you have a preference between signature?
We should have a little bit, little bit, have the signature sign there, are they a little bit?
Yes, but Mueller's signature sign says he could do the same as Mueller's, so instead of having Public Works stacked, it could be elongated, so it takes up, it wouldn't be as pronounced type thing, so instead of stacking Public Works, it makes it longer, which is what I would go for, and then maybe stacking, or having everything on the left side, below, say, the door handle, Village of Black Earth type. And on there.
As it's shown here, different than what it's shown?
As it's shown here, right, by this company?
Yep, I would have signature signs probably do it, because they're cheaper, but using
This design.
What Mueller Graphics has, with the black on the bottom, Public Works in the black.
I don't understand what he's...
I'm sorry, what?
Oh, I was just asking if they want a new mock-up, if they make that decision, if they wanna see it.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it's right here.
Did you make a motion, Scott, or not?
Yeah, I mean...
Well, I'd just make a motion that, you know, would we go with a suggestion of Republic Works Director to go with the green? I guess signature signs, because we don't have anything in black and white from... Can he pull that off down there like you wanna?
Yes.
Yeah, didn't I say we'd go with signature signs?
Instead of price insurance, is that, that change that much?
You just don't know what the price is?
Not for that change.
Just if you made that change, it there would not, you know, it's using the same amount of material which is per yard, I believe that's how he charges, charges it out. So, I mean, it would be very close, you know, ten, fifty bucks, a hundred bucks, so...
Work your magic and tell him that if he doesn't want, if he didn't want to do that, uh, come back in for anything else.
Can do that, so what do you wanna get?
What's the pressure on you?
If you're matching the color, if you're doing... He's a side maker, I've worked with those guys.
So, so I guess that's... If any, if anyone is concerned about that, we do have these three white trucks running around with the trailer, that all currently have the old blue light, lettering. The big orange truck just has embossed mitre boards on it, the mower, the tractor, you know, the big backhoe. Some of the equipment doesn't even have any type of stickers on it, saying that it's black or film. Bobcat does not have anything saying black or film.
No, but we know it's you guys, 'cause y'all's waves so nice at us when you're plowing.
There you go, yep, always with a smile.
You can always tell a village employee by their kindness and their smile.
Hit the mask, yeah.
Put your mask on upside down.
There you go, yep. Yeah, we can just leave the truck plain white, too, that's, we got it running around nude right now, so...
Everybody knows who we are.
Yeah, that's right.
You can't do the Village of Black Earth, Public Works, all right there underneath on the right panel of the door?
I think it would get congested.
Okay. You know, I don't mind...
It'd look like you're trying to squeeze...
But you think that's gonna get all my stuff, right? Is that what you're saying down here?
Having the black down there?
Yeah.
It's basically a laminate, so it kinda protects, you know, from rock chipping and such like that.
Okay, and he's gonna sticker over that?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Yeah, yeah, I say we go with that.
Perfect.
Except it...
Good, not to exceed...
I'll second it.
Not to exceed.
Signature sign.
The reflective was $645, is that correct?
Yes, and that's with the striping, the green lettering, the rock, the rock protection, the Chevron, yep.
Okay, yeah, not to exceed $645.
Second.
All right, a motion by Scott, and second by Mitch.
Thank you, everyone.
Any more discussion?
I'd be glad to be done with that.
All in favor? Me, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes. Didn't like the...
Didn't know that was coming, did you?
I liked the whole part of that.
So, there's no plans to change anything else as of right now, until we start replacing that equipment, just to let everyone know. Good, next item.
Five, discussion action on mower purchase.
Um, what's that?
I just had that out.
Everyone should've got a summary on the mower quotes.
Yeah, no matter what.
Oops, sorry. I don't know, got our full folder.
Everywhere, second, Village Board meeting.
Okay. Okay, you said, okay. Should be a summary for everybody on the mower quotes. We did Kubota John Deere, which is what we currently have, and Toro. Looking at a $10,000 trade-in on our current machine, we are planning to surplus that. That was recommended by myself and the Public Works Committee, hoping to get a higher value on Wisconsin surplus. So we'll set a reserve of $11,000 for that. So looking at a new purchase price of $11,000, in the budget, we have $10,000 for 2021, but there should be rollover, 'cause we only used $4,000 last year. So the funds are there. Going with the Kubota is what the crew recommended. With the John Deere, there was just some comfort issues, and the Kubota seems to be... Right, and the Kubota seems to be beefier, and like I said, comfort, so I'd like to entertain a motion to buy a new mower.
Actually, so it was discussed at Public Works, if we go ahead and get this on the surplus right away?
Yep, I would call tomorrow and...
And if we can't get our $11,000 out of it, we can still trade it in for $10.
Yes.
So if we can get it in and get it in an auction before spring, and we can't get our 11, which is more, or more, we can still trade it in for 10.
We just have a reserve price set.
Yep, then the mower is already...
We have a reserve set for 11 to hopefully...
My question was just on any attachments, do we have to change out attachments or anything to...
Just mower, right?
Right now, the only thing we have is a mower. I would love to get a cab, broom, snow blower, but...
Good luck.
Exactly. Shovels are cheaper, right? So, yes, there is no attachment, except the mower deck, which obviously is getting sold with the old one, and we're getting a new mower deck, obviously with the new one.
I've got a couple of questions, I just need to get up to speed on this. Why are we not just using our mower that we currently have until it just absolutely disintegrates? Is there any, what's the logic of keeping one with a warranty?
Because after warranty runs out, things can get quite expensive, you know, you can easily drop $1,000, $2,000 into a repair, and by selling it, when the warranty runs out for us, we're still getting a good trade-in price for it. I mean, if we're gonna run it till it dies, then you're forking out the whole $21,000 versus forking out $10,000 to purchase, or $11,000.
How many times do we have, how many times do we trade it in at $10,000, $10,000, $10,000? You know, like, in how many years?
How many times does it take, I mean?
No, how many, five years?
Oh, sorry, sorry, so this current machine we have is two years old right now, it has 680 hours on it.
And what did we pay for it?
It was bought before I was here, I would assume that it was probably, at that time, $18,000.
You go up every year.
Yep, they go up. Basically, when you're looking at purchasing something new, every year you wait, you're adding 3%. So if we're gonna wait another five more years, you know, to buy a new lawnmower, it's...
It doesn't last that long.
Right.
We did buy the cap for the new one. You just lose the value.
We don't have a cap.
The main thing is you lose the trade-in value.
Exactly, you're losing, yep.
And putting repair cost on.
And you're adding repair cost, and every year you go on, I think safety's number one. So...
So you reckon the seven grand is what we've spent to, we would spend that seven grand if we kept it for two more years? We would spend that in repairs, the amount that we just, so what I'm saying in my head, this is where I'm at, if it costs us $18,000, and we're willing to trade it in for 11, right? If we get 11 for it, that means that there was seven left over, so the $7,000, you reckon we would use that in repair? In the next two?
I'm not saying yes, I'm not saying no, you could, plus you're losing that value. So now, if that machine is four years old, instead of getting a trade-in value of $11,000, you're gonna get maybe $5,000 out of it, or $3,000. Right.
If it don't break in your stock.
Yeah, not if there's no repairs and such. I mean, that, that's the problem our department is having. We have a plow truck that's 15 years old that we just stuck, we're probably up to $7,000, $8,000 on that, unfortunately. You know, the longer you hang onto this stuff, you're not getting the resale, you're not getting the trade-in, you're, you're having breakdowns that are, you know, you might be waiting a part, a week for parts to come in, while are you renting a lawnmower to make those grass cuttings?
Right.
So...
I'm just asking, I wanna see how it all lays out for some of these pieces of equipment I've personally never purchased, you know, I just wanna know. And then, so, so pretty much every two years, what was it?
No, go ahead.
Oh, I didn't hear you, what?
Nothing, go ahead, whatever you're saying.
I didn't hear you, what?
We were talking amongst ourselves.
Every, every two years we spend $7,000, is that what the, kind of, the schedule would be then, based on two years ago?
Yeah, $3,500 a year, basically.
Which, when you look at the amount of grass...
Right.
$10 an hour.
That's mowed.
Yeah, basically $10 an hour.
And all the parks that we have, doesn't seem like a lot to me.
No. I mean, I can go to Farm and Fleet and buy a mower for $1,600, and it's gonna take three times as long to mow, and it's gonna break down two months.
You're gonna spend labor.
Yeah, so...
I just wanna know how it all works, and what kind of schedule we're on for purchasing mowers. It's important for me to know the background on it, and I just need to be caught, caught up to speed on what our schedule is, and what our commitment is to this particular bit of machinery. So you're saying every two years, roughly seven grand, breaks down to $3,500 a year? And it's, somebody said $10 a mow, with as much as we mow, is that what I heard?
That's what it would, that's what you're basically, $10 an hour for the machine, if you're a rec, you know, what it's costing us, yep.
Right, oh, if you're renting.
Same with the Bobcat, it's the same thing, you know, we try to flip that every two years. It's under warranty, we get a good price when we trade it back in.
Where are we in the cycle, was this, this curb mower, was that, I mean, I think at one point we just had a mower, and we, and we didn't trade in every so often, so we got...
Right, we got the fires at one point, and it just, yeah, kept, year after year, it was nickel and dime, yes, type thing.
And then who's operating the mower?
Typically, Paul Fasaghi, Scott is, Tony might get on it.
Is that the guy that mows the...
Yep, yep.
Is Paul?
Yep.
Kind of an older gentleman, he does all the parks, right?
Yes, he does a lot of the mowing for the community.
Okay, so he, basically, he would, and then how does he transport that? Is that trailer that he hauls, is that his, or is that ours?
Nope, it's drove, it's drove throughout the whole community. You know, it might take 10 minutes to get from the shop to Red Hawk, but he's either mowing stuff as he's getting to Red Hawk, or he'll completely mow Red Hawk subdivision, and then work his way back, type thing.
No, 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 I'm sure he's efficient, but whose trailer is it? How do we trailer this mower?
We drive it, it goes 12 miles an hour, there's no reason to buy a trailer, and then you'd also have to have another truck for that trailer, so we just talk, we just drive it around.
See, when I've seen him, he's been on, he's had a trailer. We're always at the power.
Yeah, there's a trailer on the back of the lawnmower.
I see.
Yep, weed eater, push mower, mower, sprays.
So he's pulling, it's kind of even a better argument then, 'cause he's using it to haul trailers then, is that right? The lawnmower is hauling trailers?
We'll put the, and this is with putting the curb mower up on auction first. That's already been approved.
That was already approved.
Do you want to approve the Kubota?
Yes, thank you.
Any more discussion on lawnmower? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Should we lose Mary and Jared?
Sorry, I was slow on the mute, I'm, aye.
Aye.
In favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, agenda item five G, discussion action, operator's license for Kristen Evans, Black Earth Land, to your renewal.
I make motion we accept to your renewal for the operator's license with Black Earth Land.
Second. A motion by Scott, second by James. Discussion?
Has there been any calls or anything that the board would need to know about, any violations?
That's all explained on the package you got right there, Mary, there's no felonies, there's no traffic violations.
No, not, not personal, I see it right here, but I'm talking about the business itself. Is there, are there any repeat calls, or police calls, or any of that kind of stuff?
Not that I'm aware of.
Police committee hasn't heard anything.
That would've been on the report if there was.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Agenda item five H, uh, discussion action on village communications with residents.
Yeah, I was Danny will leave the next two, I think.
We brought this up at last month's meeting as a, a secondary opportunity to get out to our public and also help load our audio or video of meetings easier to the YouTube channel, so Danny?
Yeah, uh, so with just length of meetings, um, it's really hard to get it onto our website. We have to break it up into chunks, that's why we're um, pausing the audio and having to restart it multiple times, so it's not very, um, not very, um, efficient and it takes a lot of our office time to keep moving with something, um, just to have it on the website. So, uh, we're brainstorming about it, um, through Zoom, you can, which we're recording with now, um, we can download it, upload it to YouTube channel and then on our website, we can have a link to the video, uh, page. Uh, so those kind of two things, uh, where the website is hosting such large file sizes and also this, uh, easy access for mower users where most people have a smartphone plugged in in this room, um, they're able to go to the website if they wanted it or to go to this channel, um, just watch the video from YouTube or catch the TV instead of downloading a large audio file from their phone, which may or may not work on their file size, but I mean, YouTube's pretty much accessible on all mobile formats, so. Um, our idea is to have the YouTube channel, um, for the village, we could have other, um, breakdowns of service, um, before or different kinds of committees, we could have something that, um, you all rely on, um, there's options for moderation of the videos where you can, um, turn off comments, turn off likes, dislikes, just have it as a kind of a read-only type of thing, or, um, how Facebook can be with dozens of comments about non-tennis. Um, so that is kind of where we're at for, for this.
Who's the administrator there?
Um, so.
I believe Mays does this already.
What's the cost?
Free.
YouTube channel, everything's free?
I think it's a good idea.
So.
And you could link some materials in the description of, um, board packets and things like that could be linked in the description so people could follow along with the, um, packets that we're looking at.
Should we even get into the can worms of, of even having comments?
That's enough saying we can have it where you can turn, turn them off.
I mean, come to a village board meeting if you wanna find out, I mean, I mean, that's a good way to find out.
And just with time, it could be, it could download it, it could make some other content tonight, or we can have it up next day on our YouTube channel.
Should make more of a one-way, right, that's the way for us to push information, we don't need more, more.
Have to read that survey, what do you think?
Yeah.
I kinda like the information.
You like that?
I mean, it does hurt.
Oh, well, you know, it hurts.
Just one more way to reach our.
It just hurts feelings sometimes.
Well, uh, one of the things to consider is with the YouTube comments is, you know, you've got troll farms, uh, that are gonna be putting comments on there, you, you got, this is, this is open to the world, so this isn't just Black Earth, we're gonna, you run the risk of getting comments that are totally irrelevant to even this hemisphere.
Yeah. I'd make twenty-eight thousand dollars for coal.
Yeah, exactly.
I hear ya. Are you looking for an action or?
Yep.
I'm not a fan, I haven't been thinking about getting off Facebook personally.
I'm not on it.
It's for YouTube, it's for YouTube, just YouTube, we haven't gone on Facebook, just, yeah, that's next.
This would be just like making our meetings, just like Mays does and I'm sure other places do it now too, but.
I'm off all that stuff right now.
It's more accessible and clear.
YouTube really is Facebook.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to, um, add the YouTube channel with moderation, uh, enabled and comments turned off.
I like that. All right, a motion by Jared, a second by James, and more discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes, unanimous. H two, Facebook page addition.
Now, we've had this discussion many, many times and in the past, it has not been favored and of course, it's been come up again and again and again, so I am throwing it back out to the board. Um, this is a lengthy discussion at EDC level, it was a huge support for this on our recent survey, so I'm throwing it out to ask your thoughts about it again. Um, you know, as with YouTube, I know, I think we're in a place where we could serve as our own administrator of this, I think Danny would probably be the administrator of it for the village. Anything else you wanna add, I mean?
So you're, you're talking same, same platform, no moderation, no comments, just another way to push out information.
This ain't showing our videos though.
Yeah, I think you can.
Right, Facebook pages just for information going out.
Yeah.
So when we have this change like that, that switchgear, hey, power's gonna be out, right, just send out that, that message.
Yeah.
Uh, there's.
So there's way to turn off comments and all the other stuff?
So. I've gone back and forth on that, uh, if you remember, look at the Village Cross Plains Facebook page, they do a really, really good job, pretty much everything is positive. Um, it's, we're doing, uh, a lot of things flushing this weekend and you say, oh, thank you for letting us know, just for, for people, I have Facebook within two clicks, it's in their hands and, um, they're not going to be checking the email, I don't check that person's email very often at all. Um, so I would recommend checking out the Village of Cross Plains Facebook page, they do a really good job graphically sharing information. They share little history facts about the village, it's really nice just to kinda interact with, um, with the population, um, residents there, um.
Well, I make a motion that we table it till next month's meeting and everybody get a chance to go over Cross Plains page.
Second that.
I can't because I'm, I'm not on Facebook, but.
Me either.
Maybe we should just postpone it till next meeting, table it, it's off the table, right, till you bring it back up? So if you just postpone it, we can just automatically put it on the next agenda, right? Without a motion.
Correct.
Yeah, that, that'd be funny.
So you wanna postpone it?
I postpone, yes.
Okay, I'll second that.
You have to depo, just, you have to postpone it definitely though to next meeting, you have to indicate that.
You postpone it till the next meeting.
Yes.
All right, the mo, um, postponement by Scott, second by Mitch. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion of postponing this item passes, uh, H three newsletter changes to include draft board minutes.
Yes, this is something I brought up at last meeting as well, is, um, either changing the newsletter to be the draft minutes of the village board meetings or adding a page to the newsletter to include draft minutes, um, there is additional fee, probably about a hundred and fifty dollars a month. Um, that could come out of our economic development fund since we are promoting our community, but, I mean, it's a discussion to have, we can either add a page or take what we have currently and use it that way or not, I mean, it's up for discussion.
Does that stop us from having to put in the paper?
No, it does not.
Does it, um, why would you wanna put a draft up on a public instead of a?
Because the, well, if we do the actual minutes, it will be a month late, it'll always be a month late if they're approved.
Understand, if they're draft, they may not be accurate, since somebody may.
That's true.
That's not true.
That's.
So, I don't do the, I don't.
Only do approved minutes on it.
Well, you're right.
It's like, if you want it at all, I mean, that's the question, do you want it or don't you, I mean, it was, you know, again, based off survey responses, we were seeing a lot of people, uh, catching up with their village news through the newsletter, so.
Why don't I put them there, it's just, I think they have to be approved minutes, right?
But we have the YouTube.
Try to reach them.
Hand the paper, do we?
Right.
Need it, we didn't have the YouTube discussion.
We, and, and we can direct, on our newsletter, we can direct them to the board meeting and YouTube channel, right, so.
And you could actually post them on Facebook.
The only ones that were heard was Scott who does them.
And if we, if we decide to go that way.
Yeah, we also put them on our website.
Yeah.
I think it is.
I'm good with whatever, we'll let them decide, just let them bring it up and, you know, it's fine, make a motion and, yeah.
Well, I just think of this, but there's been no action on the topic of that. Unless somebody wants to make a motion in regards to that.
Can you repeat that last part again, I, I couldn't really understand.
Does anybody, would, would, would you like to make a motion in regards to the newsletter changes, or do not, we'll just call it the no action item.
So draft board minutes not to be included in the newsletter, but just to remain on the website as it is right now?
Not even necessarily draft, it could be actual approved minutes.
So the dra, well, the draft board minutes would be pretty valuable.
Yeah, but they're not correct.
They're not, they're not correct for people to view if they're not approved.
They're not approved.
So if something's wrong on it, somebody might get the wrong information.
Yeah.
And, and then the person who knows it's wrong might not have a chance to correct it, that's not. And, and on our newsletter, we can direct people to look at the YouTube channel to view the whole meeting, I mean.
Right.
What do you need minutes for?
And now that we're making that change, that's gonna be helpful.
Yeah, I go along with Troy, let's just make this an issue.
Okay.
All right, agenda item six, reports, Vanguard Commission, uh, Sean, as long as Sean is here, I think I've just had him very, very into superintendent report.
So you just kinda mentioned it, giving us a little update, um, I don't know if it's public work too, but, uh, we did have pretty large outage here, D L C O, um, had to have the whole substation deenergized, found a broken switch in the sub, um, both five minutes, you know, by the fire department and the high school, uh, Dr. Shelley too, and I believe you guys sent out an email blast of your, um, movers done signed up on the email, but it was kind of an emergency, so kinda had to take quick action, um, got that fixed, like, dollars, maybe just ten, ten minutes at most, so worked out pretty good.
Yeah, that's pretty quick work.
Um, we got another broken street light pole. I don't, I don't, I don't, that might work, no more than I do, I don't know a whole lot about it besides the guys got called on it, uh, or you called them the other day and.
Yeah, Troy.
They said, but we gotta replace them, so, or replace them, so.
So is that where we're going with the same as what's been passed?
Correct, yep, and, yeah.
That one was a strange one.
They're, they're getting so riddled, I mean, I think anybody looks at me wrong, I mean, they're gonna step over, so, especially in front of, from all the restaurants or bars, I think people are always coming in and out, who knows, somebody could've just slid in and walked into it.
Twenty-six hundred levels there, that's three different lights.
So maybe it's the newer version of them.
That's a rowdy section.
And I can say his name, but I won't.
Um, for next month, I did talk to Bruce, I got the capital's calling him and one of the building engineers on Thursday about our substation study he's been doing, um, so I don't know if you're gonna put that on next month's agenda, um, I've got him, uh, I don't know how much he's got, I'll, I'll, I'll confirm it, confirm that with him on Thursday, but so everybody's aware, we just gotta complete, so. Also, end of the year, we finished up a couple of big projects, um, we've been waiting on, um, highway F and Turkey Road, there's an overhead duct that got replaced since there, we got an overhead line that goes up through a right away that's falling apart, um, replace that, also, we started a project, um, KP, um, it's one of the main feeds that comes out of the substation, it feeds all the way out to the high school, um, is in rough shape, plus it goes up through the farm fields and we can't even get back in there, so that was the first step of that project, we, uh, bored from the sub basically to the edge of town, so. Um, that would probably be reflected par, partially in the bill for December, um, and that email came out. And I apologize to those of you on the screen, I, we could send this out to you later, uh, but I did provide what we sent in the month's bill, kind of a breakdown of our projects, every project, um, on the first page is for December, uh, hundreds filling, and on the second page is all the year's projects, so.
Now, can I, can I ask, clarify something on the first page though, because I don't know, no, they don't, because we see all of this, because there's so many bills, I don't want to send them all out in detail. Does the T signify something different than the B on the code?
Black, the B is, uh, is basically just a work order number, so that's Black Earth in the village and the T is just, oh, your rural, so, I don't know if I'd be.
We have to do that because of the way, I think some of the PSD coding or however your conference word, we have to distinguish between village and.
Well, it's easier to distinguish township from the village then.
And when we set up our housing system, that's how it kinda gets set up, so. That's a little bit confusing, but, brings that down all pretty well, um, also, point out, um, last year we had a sixty, sixty, six hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget, we owe that higher bill, um, in December, we're still about thirty thousand under that budget, so, and I believe that December bill was about a hundred and twenty thousand and twenty nineteen's bill was about a hundred and three thousand, at the end of the year, we gotta pay all comp time, uh, vacation, things like that, so, see that, December's a little higher bill. Lots of projects in twenty twenty, so, good year.
What you got coming up?
I don't know, I still haven't been told what our budget is, so.
They don't have a budget.
I, I did look in the financial sheets and I looked, I added it up, about six hundred and thirty something.
Yes.
Is that the actual approved budget?
Yeah, I, you'll see, I broke it down, we can go through that a little bit more tomorrow, so.
I just seen it tonight and I quickly added it up, so, um, I will update this spreadsheet where it's highlighted, if I give up a few of you guys, I'll update the projects that, that kinda fit that budget, and obviously those bud, those projects, even though I list them change constantly, I mean, it's a baseline, we got things that pop up, bad undergrounds, things like that, that we get a contractor to come in and bore and that, that changes our scope of our projects, so. So last year, our budget was six hundred and fifty, so we dropped down to six hundred and thirty. Even though we came in on thirty, uh, oh, and that's.
So you gotta remember, our revenue is because of COVID this last year, we're down twelve percent, that's, that's impacting what we're seeing coming into this year, so, you know, trying to make that up's gonna be a little bit challenging for the utility, so, one, uh, that's.
We're gonna move.
Well, thank you, we have built, been built for Bruce, um, for his study, so that was technically a last year's project, so, that's gonna def, that's gonna, I guess, go on this year's budget, so it'll be five thousand dollars under, or depending, not to exceed five thousand, so. Sean, I think most of the carryover five thousand dollars over from last year, so this year to pay for that or whatever it is.
I don't think we're gonna have any carryover considering the health of that utility right now, so, there's a loss in that revenue.
I think, um, for managing and organizing the projects, if that can go through public works, I think, do you have questions with it or as far as trying to manage them or organize them, I think that'd be a good way to go through.
Uh, whatever.
Yep, I, I bring everything to public works, so I bank a lot of work and I'm, so.
They're pretty.
Well, I mean, through the committee, through the committee, you know what I mean?
He does.
Did get the budget down.
Right, you two, you two are both on Vanguard, so you gotta.
Yeah, we're on Vanguard and then, he does, he does bring it to public works, exactly, yeah, yeah.
Well, I strive to be pretty strict with that, so.
Yeah, I think he's got his base.
No, I'm saying, going, all I'm saying is going forward to, to manage it instead of us as a board, the whole board managing and looking at your project list. Yep. If that can be.
Yeah.
I just wanted you guys to be aware of, and that email came out the other day and I'm like, well, I don't want anybody to think we're not being transparent, I think we break things down pretty well, so, I wanna make sure that everybody's on the same page and if anybody has any questions, please ask, without a day we'll do it, so.
All right, so the last, uh, last meeting was, um, January nineteenth. And the next. And the next meeting is March sixteenth. Jared, the other, the news of the committee itself, um, the committee approved, um, replacement of a pickup truck, same type of thing as like the lawnmower, the trucks are on a schedule.
Yep.
And, um, and raises were approved, um, for the crews, and, yeah. Um, you got a matching safety grant, or that's for more like equipment or clothing?
Yeah, it's like a five hundred dollar safety grant, they just match, so, we're doing that as well.
Matt, that's still available for you too.
Get on it.
Yep.
Um, Frost policy, it's a, if they've, um, contracted to work and they can't dig because of the, um, because of the cold and have to come back, there's now a cost to the, to the person that requires work, since the Vanguard has to go back, so it's a.
For the temporary.
Temporary, okay. All right.
Do you remember what actual dollar amount was that we generated for temp fees? Two thousand dollars or something?
Just under, yeah.
So we never had, never had a temp, temp meter fee, or like somebody built a house, they put on a temporary meter, so actually generated over two grand, I think, this year, so that was, was all income and we never had before.
Finally got it ironed out, did we?
That was, yeah.
Yeah, it took us a while to get there, but we got it, okay.
All right, any questions for Sean? All right, thank you very much, Sean.
Thank you.
Six thirty. Good night. Thank you. We're gonna run out of files. All right, uh, those board meetings, give me a second. Six B Black Earth Fire District, Mary?
Yes, um, the Fire District met on one twenty-nine and, um, the agenda talked about, uh, elec, uh, approval of chief, and the chief has not been, uh, voted on yet, they're gonna do that in March. And the building, the roof is being replaced with a metal roof, um, with a company that's doing it best price and good warranty, so there's that. Um, there is a leak in the engine two tank and the repair updates, this has been kind of ongoing, but they found a company that, uh, will fix it. Add a more, uh, more accessible from the top than from the bottom and taking the tank out, which is timely and probably a better way to do it. Um, there is a, uh, they did old business department on retain, uh, department retained earnings discussion. They wanted me to ask the village board slash Shelley, um, everybody was supposed to go and ask their board this, um, if they take designated earnings and move it around, if it doesn't come through a levy, can that be done? So can you take designated earnings and move it around when it doesn't come through a levy?
So I, I think it has to do with some FEMA money that there is volunteer labor and stuff for that was left over, right, Mary?
No, there isn't, um, there, there's no more FEMA money coming in, what they wanted, um, to know.
It's money that's already there. Sorry, Mary, go ahead.
They want to start setting aside money for, um, fire truck before it comes due, so it's not such a shock and it doesn't go to levy. They want to start setting aside money, um, knowing that perpetually a truck will fail in a certain number of years. And, and so they want to move funds over to a dedi, designated, um, line item, so that they don't.
Vehicle replaced.
No, replacement schedule.
That's right, thinking.
We don't like thinking.
And they think that that would be better than, um, kind of the sticker shock of doing it, let's say, every five years when a truck fails, or when a truck starts.
Fire commission has requested this?
Yes.
Yes.
Because that time has come up quite a bit, and, and it's like each community, each member of the commission has, Black Earth could do that if they would want, like to.
Yeah, well, the Fire District used to do it, and it got into, um, a little history. It got into the point where they had borrowed money for a couple of trucks, and the town of Berry had extra money back then, which they say they don't anymore. They want to pay it off early, and it, they couldn't pay it off early to save the interest because it was too hard to figure out the interest for, and, and how to divide that out. And at the time, Black Earth Bank was here, they wanted to use their own depository, so that sinking fund went away back then. And so like, I think Vermont and some of these other townships that already do it for Mount Horstide are like, why aren't we doing this? And, so it's coming back around, so.
I, I will ask our auditor to make sure the right way to do that.
Okay.
It, it's been done in the past, so.
I, 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 my guts help me.
I, I thought it was about, I'm sorry, Mary, I, me and Dan had talked, I thought it was about some of the surplus money from, um, applied, so, totally different subject, so, sorry.
And it would be handled differently too.
Do they have any information on how much per year for eternity?
They didn't, they didn't throw out any, uh, dollar figure, they just want to know, um, I'm sure that they would have an ask for each community, just like they're, you know, based on the population or however they're, I, I shouldn't speak to that, because they didn't, they didn't discuss how they would do it. They just were, there were a couple of people that were very adamant that we should designate funds so that it's, um, it's there and it's set aside for that. But that, um, um, in order to move it around, should they need to open up those funds, they didn't want to lock it into a fund that was procured via levy? Because then it has to be used for that specific item, they want to have the freedom to be able to move it around if they need to.
No, it shouldn't, if you take, collect the money for a truck, it should go for the truck.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah, all right, I'll second.
All right, good.
Anything else, Eric?
Yeah, um, so, let's see. Yeah, the FEMA money, there is, um, FEMA money left over, but there's no more FEMA money coming in, just to clarify, in case that confused anybody.
Um, there will be more FEMA money, we have not closed out one of the Fire Department projects yet, it's still outstanding, so there'll be more coming, so, I don't know how much, though.
Can you send me details on that, because they were adamant that there was no more FEMA money coming?
They wouldn't know, because it's through the village, so.
Yeah, they wouldn't know, because it comes through us, we have nine projects with FEMA, the Fire Department, I think, had three of those.
Three or four.
So, yeah, it's ongoing.
Can you send me details on that, so that I can take that to the next district meeting?
I'll see what I can do.
Okay, I'll be waiting for them.
They already have summaries of every project, they just don't keep track of which one's done, so.
Okay, I just would like to clarify at the next meeting, just in case they forgot about it, or, it's the first time the FEMA monies come up, so, um, that was an, uh, an old discussion. Um, so they have, uh, they discussed pretty thoroughly new regs on, um, FPS, and that they want not only the officers have to take it, but that they want the volunteers to take it. And that they're trying to ease people's minds about the, uh, commitment time, it's, um, they shared it between Mount Horeb and here, um, at the two-day training and testing. And you actually don't have to pass the test in order to get the cert, so they would like everybody to be certified, kind of just get in, ahead of where they see this is going, that eventually everybody's gonna have to be certified. Um, but that approaching it in, uh, a gentle manner and not a, you know, and not a, um, demanding it, but that, um, currently, it's not an issue, because my understanding from what he said is all of the volunteers currently have the training, so they're up to speed for the now. So that was, um, some new business, uh, that's all I have, and then the next meeting, does anybody have any questions?
When's the next meeting, Mary?
The next meeting is March eleventh, it'll be at six thirty.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, six D, Dana, my wastewater commission. So, last meeting was Thursday, January twenty-first, and, um, so there's, um, more talk, there's possible water supply issues at the facility, so the engineering will, will come to the next meeting with, um, solutions for those issues. Um, just.
Want for washing sludge or what?
Tanner, I need you to shut your face.
Just the supply, just, just the waters, whether there's well problems or some, some of that. Um, Town and Country will be taking over the trueup portion again of the financial audit, I don't know if that really affects yours. So what's happened is, um, Town and Country didn't pass, and then for some reason Johnson, I think it was Johnson, Johnson Block would perform it, but they have to ask, is that right? Do you know anything about this, bro? But then they have to ask Town and Country, they have to ask Town and Country a bunch of questions, and now it's like, why don't Town and Country just do it again? So that's.
So, and then you're Town and Country?
Yes, but a different division, different division, I guess, so. Different than the, the trueup that I've done for you, for the village, on your side, just to make sure you're not overpaying.
Yeah.
The, the, Iowa, Iowa trueup is, to make sure they're charging all the community members properly and correctly. Similar, but just different side of the. And that was posed by, by Johnson Block, because there's some losing expertise in that can be accurate and better Town and Country, which Town and Country did at one time. And are still involved with the, uh, during the current one, so, it makes sense. Uh, there were some, um, items, um, some equipment that was, was to be replaced, and, um, just due to scheduling, they had not been completed, but that was then scheduled for this week. There's some motors and some controls, motor drives, so that work is ongoing. Um, next meeting will be held, um, February eighteenth, six thirty P M. Uh, six D Economic Development Committee, meeting last meeting, um, last meeting was January twentieth, and, uh, prior discussions of that meeting was survey, I think survey's in the packet, right?
Yeah.
Uh, survey's also on our website, so the, uh, goal of committee is to review that survey more depth and, uh, kind of provide a, kind of, say, a list of action items, per se, and then determine who might be responsible for those action items. Was a consensus of group that no matter what, now we perform the survey, we should try to address some of the issues on the survey, not saying that E D C is the committee to do that, or at least the committee to organize the information. Jared, would you like to describe the, um, surveys more, give more information on the survey?
Um, you know, we had.
Our participation in the survey?
Sure, yeah, we had a twenty-six percent turnout on the survey results, uh, we mailed out over seven hundred and eighteen surveys that went out with the property tax bill. And it's had great response, twenty-six percent, so, I'm pretty pleased with that, there's a lot of comments, obviously, there, um, respondents were primarily all Village of Black Earth residents. Um, good feedback on the elementary school as well, which was also part of the E D C conversation with Jordan there, we did take that up a little bit more, um, that night.
Is that all the information, the online and the hand?
Yeah, so what's in your packet is exactly what's online.
Well, what about the paper ones, like that?
Yeah, the paper ones were transferred into the system, so that we could get everything all, um, total in and analyzed that way.
Yep, so the survey was part of, for completing the, um, comprehensive plan, this was that step. For that. How I've originated the purpose of it, per se.
A good initiation, huh?
All right, um, next E D C meeting is Wednesday, February twenty-fourth at six P M. Six E Emergency Management Committee?
No meetings, we've got a plan on.
Uh, six, uh, EMS Committee?
Uh, yep, so some, uh, expenditure and financial report approvals, um, they did mention that, uh, most of District One members have had their first COVID vaccination. Um, and they'll be getting their second on one nineteen, so about two weeks ago, they should have started getting their second dose. They also received a couple of U V lights to, uh, help clean and disinfect, uh, the vehicles. There was an approval, there was a, or there is a appreciation dinner that's usually held in March, but due to it being canceled last year, uh, they still had funds left over for that, and they decided to disperse those funds to the volunteers, um, instead of having, holding a dinner like they normally would. And then, uh, their training, their monthly training has gone virtual, uh, completely virtual, so there was a request for some additional, uh, computer hardware and software, um, an additional twenty-five hundred dollars that was approved and came out of the F A P account. Outside of that, the next meeting is March eleventh at six thirty.
Any questions for Jared? Jared, the original meeting date, could you please?
Oh, sorry, uh, January fourteenth at six thirty.
Thank you, Jared. Six G Library Report, Mary?
Yep, the library met on January twentieth at seven thirty, and, uh, the new trustee, Simone Munson, um, was introduced, and, uh, she got her trustee training on one fourteen. Um, the offices, they're going to keep the offices the same until April, so the president treasurer is Gary Schutz, the vice president, um, is Linda Colby. Uh, Angie Updike will be the, oh, I'm sor, no, no, scratch that, sorry, president treasurer Gary Schutz. Angie Updike will be secretary vice president, Linda Colby is, uh, trustee, Simone Munson is a trustee, and I'm the village rep. Uh, the April rules will be reexamined for reassignments in April. Carolyn Schaefer's last day was the thirty-first of January, uh, she had an exit interview the same day. We previously developed goals of any exit interview, um, and job reference, um, necessities for the employees that would be leaving. Position extra, uh, description was updated, job posting was announced, possibility of expanding the announcements, uh, to local school employees, um, after, uh, talking with Jordan Sins about that at a later date. Application deadline is February twenty-eighth, and the start date hopefully will be April first, because Kirsten's, um, library, uh, library director position as a temporary, uh, will end March thirty-first. The library board discussed the one-five village meeting. The inter-board communication as a result of closed sessions, um, coming out of, uh, the ramifications of the information imparted at, from the village board meeting at eleven sixteen, it was discussed that that didn't have any effect, um, them delaying to hear it in December on their response. Um, they talked about, um, suggesting approaches to improved communication between the boards would come in the form of using written agreements between the boards in the future, so that it can be clear and, um, referenced. The mediation, uh, the library board decided to keep the mediation. The mediation, uh, the library board decided to keep the mediation, uh, put the mediation on hold. If the village board wants to wait until the elections, um, there was, be no sense in them starting the mediation process without, um, village board cooperation. The library audit request, um, there, there is a request for the delay of the motion that was approved for the audit. Um, audits have expiration dates, um, and they may not, that expiration day may not coincide with the building or development plan in the library's future, if there is one. And the bottom line, um, the library, um, is subject to an audit should the village insist, but that the library should not incur any expenses for an audit that they did not request. And, uh, they're asking for accurate representation of the library board on the village agenda, which I noticed is just listed under reports and that the library board is this, listed as library board. So, that appears to be addressed. Uh, inter-board reporting, they discussed and suggested to improve communication through written agreements between boards, properly noticed agendas, heads up, um, on library board business appearing on village board agendas, properly cc-ing, um, the parties that were agreed would be all in communication, being the library board president, the director, or acting director, and the library board rep on any and all emails, um, from village board, village board president, or administrator. Uh, library bylaws were modified and approved. The racial equity statement was approved. They went into clo- we went into closed session. And to discuss, uh, library director benefits, separation, uh, and library directors' personnel file. Coming out of closed session, there was a motion and an approval of the 160 hours of vacation time that was accrued um, after the first of the year, um, kind of an automatic is how it works here in the village. Uh, the library board motion to authorize payment of all vacation time to the outgoing library director upon separation. And that is that. And then the future meeting is February 16th at 7:00 PM.
So, the library board voted together, vacation time for 2021, is that what you're saying?
Um, it's actually a policy, um, that Shelley explained to, that Shelley explained to, um, Carolyn and, uh, Gary, when they met with her, that that's an automatic with the village. And, um, so the library board agreed.
All your vacation day, that's, that's something that's written in, you can. I'm sorry, can you? I'm sorry, I missed Gary. Yeah, I'm, I'm going to just answer your question, yes.
Any other questions for Mary? Gary, are you here for the director?
I am, if, I could have a few more. Mary did, uh, it'd take a lot of my information, but I just want to read through this real quick. Uh, we did complete the exit interview with Carolyn. Um, the information we got as a result of that discussion really should help with the transition to a new director. Um, we have already received several applications for the position, and, um, we are excited to get a new director in place. Um, as Mary mentioned, the application deadline is, uh, the end of this month, February 28th. Uh, Kirsten Rogers has stepped into the role of interim director, um, and her focus is really to be on the core responsibilities of the position. Um, and she and I have started working together already, so I'm, I feel pretty positive about that. Carolyn and Kirsten spent a good amount of time getting a jumpstart in the annual report for South Central Library System. Um, and I suspect that's going to be submitted on time without any issues, so feeling pretty positive about that as well. Um, I was hoping there would be one more gen- item on the agenda tonight, um, and Mary did touch on it, and that was the, uh, in-depth audit. Um, we, the board did, uh, ask me to request, um, that Troy and I discussed, um, I just got to find my notes here. Uh, rescinding or reconsidering your motion, uh, uh, of the library paying for an in-depth audit in 2021. Uh, our rationale for that request is two-fold. The first is we do not have any, uh, building or expansion projects for the foreseeable future. Uh, therefore, if the audit's completed in 2021, the information gathered concerning our financial foundation would likely be many years out of date before, uh, any project is really considered. Since we are getting a new director, um, I think that that person's going to take some time to get, to find a seat, to get used to the community, to be used to them. And my personal opinion, as somebody mentioned here tonight, I'm one member of the board, but I'm not going to push for any reconstruction, any expansions, until they really have found their, their role, I guess. Uh, the second reason that we really want the, uh, delay on that, um, our budget for the calendar year 2021 was finalized in October of 2020. A $3,000 expense is a significant cost for the library, and we would create, be able to prefer, ugh, can't do it. We would prefer to be able to budget for such an expense appropriately through the typical annual budget process. I've heard that mentioned in this meeting tonight for a couple things. So, that's what I wanted to discuss, didn't get on the agenda, so I did want to mention it. That's all I have, thanks for the opportunity.
All right, thank you, Gary.
You bet.
Any questions for Gary?
Um, so, I've been on, I've only been on the board since April.
Okay.
But every month since April, when Mary come back, she'd be talking about the, the committee that's looking for a new place to build or to add on to the existing library. So, I'm, I'm kind of baffled that nothing's been planned or looked at when we've been told every month since April that it has, so.
Carolyn reported in July of last year in her report about the plan.
Yep.
Which, which plans did you report on?
Do you have the?
Yeah, there was, um, well, one was in the, um, it was in the strategic, strategic plan, and, um, there was like they were actively, uh, reviewing blueprints and, and things, and they were hoping to have some presentations in July.
That, that's fully true. We did, hang on one second, one second. So, we, we did look at some options. We, we, um, looked at expanding this space over here because space over there is very tight. Anybody who's used the library realizes that. We did have some drawings drawn, uh, drawn up at our own expense, um, looking at options there. Um, Shelley brought an opportunity, uh, for the Adler property as a potential study. We looked at that. But at this point, there are no plans to go forward. Having something in a strategic plan, I think is a great idea. Here's where we'd like to go, this is the plan, but at this point, there are no concrete plans to build anything, to buy anything, nothing. I hope, did that answer all your concerns?
Well, it does, but I mean, um, blueprints are pretty far along, but.
Blueprints were for an expansion of this space over here.
Okay, still, still building on, okay, okay.
So, I'll put it this way, if, if there's support to, to put this back on an agenda from, from several board members, then I will put it on the next month's agenda.
We've already started the audit.
All right, I know.
We can, uh, discuss that on item 10, right? Of the agenda, things to be brought back before the board, because I have a couple things I want.
Okay. Well, I mean, I guess we want to discuss, we want to discuss in depth, I mean, if, if we actually want to talk about rescinding that, if there's support for the board to put it on the agenda, but if there was no support from the board members to put it on, I was like, I didn't put it on this. Might have more questions, brief questions, we can, if you want to ask now.
Well, it's not, it's not part of the agenda, so if you've pretty heard that.
Well, if it's under library, library, um, items.
No discussion, no action.
Right, no, any action, which you, which if you want to inquire.
Mitch, did I answer all your questions?
You did, you did, and, 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 you know, I understand, you know, but, you know, for all these months, we worked all different, and, and you got to understand that side of it, too.
Absolutely.
The other thing I'd like to ask you is, is this board has been very supportive of the library. I don't know, you haven't been here to see it, um, I've never heard anybody in this board say they want to control the library or do anything bad with the library or against the library. It's a very valuable part of our community, everybody knows that. You've got to have a library, it's got to be strong, we need to get along to make it strong as a community.
Absolutely.
With that being said, has, has our closed board session ever been conveyed to yours of our support to you and your board?
Have you ever been told that?
Have you ever been told that?
I, I believe I have.
You believe you have, okay. And, and, I mean, we put a handshake out to your board and, and have heard crickets, right? And, you know, I, it's hard to start mediation without even having a good conversation. I mean, I think that if we sat down and we talked, you'd, you'd be surprised how much we really agree. And how much better we get along. I think we go along fine, I think it's just miscommunication.
Troy, can I respond to that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, very quickly, and please forgive me, this is off the top of my head, but we have tried to get some joint meetings going, and a previous president has rejected a couple of those. And so, that's the groundwork that I came into is that this is the, the appearance of faith. And so, there, there's a history of rejection from my point of view.
Yep.
And when I spoke here at the last meeting, I don't think you were here at the last meeting, the, the thing that I said as part of my comments was perception is everything, it's everything. And so, I'm going to pick on you a little bit.
Yep.
And say, um, if that's the perception that we get, that's all we've got. And so, when we say, hey, we'd like to meet, and the former president says, well, you need to do a feasibility study first on this project, or we'd like to meet, we want to have a conversation. We don't need any lawyers involved, we don't need any, you know, big plans or anything, we just want to talk.
Yep.
That's all it is.
And, and I agree, absolutely agree with you, 100%.
There you go.
But it's not the old village president, it is pretty much a new board.
Right.
I have a question I want to ask about that.
Sure.
How do you feel a joint meeting can support the autonomy of the library board?
That was going to be my question.
At this point, I don't have an answer for you.
I guess my concern, I'm just sharing with my concern is this, is if we start with joint meetings, which is helpful for communication, how does that blur the lines of the autonomy the library has, has so strongly put out there and that we support? I'm concerned that it'll get misconstrued.
Right.
And it'll cause.
Who?
It'll cause further communication issues.
Public.
Public.
The public perception of everything, so if you're on meeting and you're fighting for your autonomy, what, what does that say to the community? I mean, you can't have it both ways.
I'm not sure I'm asking for it both ways, and, and again, I'm speaking as one person, I want to state that out loud to everybody listening. I am one member of the board, that's all I can speak for is me.
And I want no control over what the library does, I think they need to be there.
One second, one second, I want to answer Shelley's question first. Um, the, the idea of ha- having a discussion, having a meeting with the village board, I think has nothing to do with autonomy.
Yep.
It has to do with that we are in a partnership. You do fund a significant portion of the library, and not having discussions about that, I think that's just a bad idea.
Yeah, I agree.
I think that's just a bad idea. And so, I don't know what to do with, about the perceptions, other than move forward.
I, I think you'd be surprised how willing we are to support you guys and not interfere with your business. I, I, I've never heard it, so, you know, the thing is, we, the Village of Black Earth funds 132,000 or so, 130-some thousand of the library budget. 52,000 comes from Dane County. Of that 52 from Dane County, it's based on equalized value of the territory. The Village of Black Earth has a considerable portion of that, too. So, my concern isn't that. My concern is also that the employees are still employees of the Village of Black Earth, they're not totally separated. So, if something happens with an employee problem that gets out in the public, which should never happen, an employee complaint should never make it in the public. And if somebody gets sued, the Village of Black Earth could get sued.
I have to interrupt you.
Right.
I am not convinced that that was a complaint.
Okay.
And, and, and I will.
That could be, I don't know, all I'm saying is what was in the paper, okay, Gary?
Absolutely.
And I don't care, it's not my problem, but if something would happen and the library would get sued, the village gets sued because now you're insured by us, and you're also employees of ours. So, you know, being independent is fine, but it's scary when you're not the parts that aren't independent, because we're still liable people. So, I, I don't know how to change that, and maybe, maybe, I don't know, but it's my concern. And there are things we can talk about, and, and I, I really think that we have good things going for us together as a group, I really do.
Same with that. Scott, I apologize, I interrupted you.
Yeah, me too, Scott.
I, I was, I was going to say, I have nothing but 100% support for, for, for future plans. I use a, oh, wonderful spot. The things that got miscommunicated, um, caused some very hard feelings on this board because when we got the barrage of the complaints and all the support for Carolyn, that should have been going right at your board.
Absolutely.
And so, the public perception is, oh, this guy's on the village board, they got their heads. And I didn't like walking away from all of that, that was bad, man. I didn't say everything I wanted to say, but I'm going to say it now. I said, you know, if it's going to be autonomous, why not make the employees autonomous? I mean.
Kind of my point, right?
Because that way, we don't have to get mixed up.
It costs a lot more to do that.
We can fund it, we can throw, we can throw money, we can help it, whatever. But I don't ever want to see that particular, that issue come to light again, that, that, that was just rotten, so. This is my thoughts.
But.
Thank you.
You have my support, just so you know.
I appreciate that.
And you have mine, too, it's a hard job to put it all back together.
Yes, it is, we can do it together.
There you go, I appreciate the positivity. Thank you, Troy.
I would like to clarify also, Mitch, I don't know where you're getting that I brought up every month that we were going to do a major building renovation, that is not what was said. I talked about the strategic plan, I really had to, uh, muscle in to allow Carolyn to share that valuable strategic plan. Um, anything that was discussed about, uh, a building, um, project was, would have been on the subcommittee that I am a member of that's never even met, which is the building committee. And, um, therefore, there isn't any information to impart other than what was in the strategic plan, and I was not allowed to go into any detail of that. Um, I was limited to allowing Carolyn to present and given, and she was given five minutes. So, there is not a continual, whatever's being interpreted, I stick to the agenda when I give my, um, reports. And that, I, I don't want to be.
Over and over.
Now, just a second, I don't want to be villainized as somebody who keeps bringing up major plans, and that's the reason for.
Don't think everybody's accusing you of anything, Mary.
Accusing you of anything?
I just remember hearing it, so I.
Well, you may have remembered hearing it during the strategic plan portion.
Mary, nobody's accusing you of anything.
We just need to make sure that when we're using, um, global words like every single meeting, we heard about your major plans from the rep, that is incorrect, and we need to be very careful about these kind of expansive comments. Because that.
Such a positive note with this, I think we should move on.
We need to stick to the agenda, and then we need to, um, just acknowledge that the reports are based on agenda material.
Five H Public Works Committee.
All right, so, we met on January 20th at 3:00 PM. Um, we talked about, uh, the street light on Highway 14 getting completed, we got a letter of thank you, right?
Yeah.
That was Red Hawk.
Seventy.
Red Hawk.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, the Red Hawk. Um, Highway 14, which one?
Call Road, that was.
That was, Highway 14 and Call Road is the other one, okay. That was brought up, and since it's not in the Village of Black Earth, um, we asked Shelley to contact the township, um, and maybe the DOT, just to see if they can do something with the street light, it's not ours, so we can't really put a street light out there. Um, discussion action on Clear Street, Maple Street, the final assessments were brought by Brian tonight. Um, we had the Public Works Director Report, we talked about the, um, signage on the truck, um, had the, uh, radio switched over for $464 from GenCom, from one truck to another. Um, Orange Plow Truck, um, there's considerable cost of $20,400 and something to date for repairs. Um, and we've only had it about five years, six years. Um, old, uh, 450 was worth about, had about $16,000, we're just talking about a swapping fund to continually replace them. Um, talked about the lawnmower sending it to Wisconsin. Um, talked about the lawnmower sending it to Wisconsin surplus, which was already approved by this board. Um, there was projects, he was, we talked about projects with meter exchange, um, maintenance, and how Vanguard get ready for some of the trees trimming, uh, tree removal, right?
Yep.
And, uh, do some, maybe not much training on COVID yet, but there might be, not much training with COVID right now, but might be some coming up. And our next meeting is February seventeenth at one P M.
So, any discussion on the orange truck, if that's, uh, going forward, that's the, uh, my vehicle or not? Or because of the way we have approached it, this news seems to be-
The reason that we've always had a large truck like that was because once upon a time, we went and contracted it on assault with Dane County Highway. Now that we contracted with Black Earth, it's a little bit closer. Is there the need for that big truck? Maybe not. Um, but I feel that if we do downsize, we definitely need to have our own storage facility. Not necessarily, not necessarily for the whole year supply, but maybe just for a couple storms type thing. So we're not constantly having, because we don't have access to the township garage. It's make a phone call. They have to come up every time. You're going out to premier to weigh the truck and then weigh it again, you know, when she get lowered up, stuffs like that. Um, so definitely something I've been looking into. But at this time, we have no replacement fund or anything, so just kind of a work in progress. You know, I've been working with builders, Monroe Truck, Casper, um, just various builders, like, this is what we got. This is what we kinda had.
About new now, right?
What's that?
About new now.
Yeah, yeah. Well, so, yeah, we had, uh, stuck. The O'Donnells, I think, was twenty-seven hundred dollars. Have not seen the premier bill, which estimates were about four thousand dollars. Actually took it back last week because it had a diaphragm on a brake chamber, start leaking, which was nothing to do with any other repairs, but just that's how fast things can change, you know, on a fifteen-year-old truck, you know.
It passed D O T.
It did, yep. Yep, it did pass D O T finally.
Didn't do so.
Yeah, yep, yep. So, yeah, kind of analyzing all of our equipment and seeing, can we make better use of certain things? And eliminate certain things, looking into those, but that also does-
Spend some money here.
Exactly. You gotta spend some money in order to technically save some money type thing. So, um, are you, you're good, right?
Mitch, anything else?
You're good?
No, I'm good.
So, yeah, that was, one of the things was the big truck, um, having the work done to it. It's getting to be an expensive item, but I think we're thirty-seven percent of repairs versus what the cost was of that truck. Um, the old four fifty will be surplused looking at March second for that date. I believe that's when the auction starts for that. Uh, so we kinda started taking some stuff out, slowly taking it out of service. The radio went out of that one into the new truck. Um, speaking of surplus, you know, the mower will go up there. We took a police light bar, alternate side parking, signs are up there. Here's the old speed board. Um, snow removal, haven't really had a whole lot of complaints. Um, just some concerns about the radiuses near crosswalks on Main Street. You know, so we're trying to get those corners rounded up again. Um, I did have a thirty-seven minute conversation of complaints today for snow from one resident about how come- What's that?
Was that, can you just give a general light street where that was?
The west side of the village. Basically, just complaining that they feel that the curved streets are plowed better than the non-curved streets.
Okay.
Mailboxes are-
Won't be, I think, I mean-
Right, mailboxes, we didn't get, you know, tight to those, which you can only get so tight before you start taking them off type thing. You know, with this amount of, you know, we've had so much snow lately, it just starts building up. So, all in all, I think we're doing well. I haven't had-
So you gave, you gave one person thirty-seven minutes?
You know, I did. I'm like, you know-
That's very nice of you. It's time to take an egg time and say you got three minutes.
I guess that's just like public comment. You're right.
And just turn it over and say, okay, I gotta go. I got to go to the shelter.
Yep, I sat there through my lunch and, yeah, listened on it and that. But, um, so snow removal's actually going pretty well. Like you said, we've been doing a lot. There's a lot of salting that happens, just salting, not plowing, you know, which does save a lot of time for overtime, running fuel, such like that for multiple trucks. Um, one of the conversations and things I've been kind of feeling out is we have a stormwater ditch down by the Dane Iowa Lift Station, which everything from Main Street, uh, K, or sorry, Mill Street from KP down to the car wash, all runs out to this ditch and has trees that are thirty feet tall in it. And the problem is it does fall in the railroad right away. I made those contacts with railroad. And Brian, you can probably confirm this, we do need to get railroad insurance, is what I was told. And depending upon where the work falls, we'd have to get possible-
Level for these trees?
But it's in our stormwater ditch. So it's a really gray area.
Probably the railroad has to care, right?
Yep. And, and they said they're more unhappy, you know, what they can get with their brush cutter, they'll try to do, but-
I mean, that one could have the desert picked on in a day.
Right, yeah.
There's different insurances. Do you accidentally damage their rail-
Yep.
By dropping a chainsaw, a running chainsaw on the rail?
Right, right.
Well, when this is railroad responsible, we wouldn't have to worry about a thing.
Yeah. So, yeah, if they can, they'll cut out whatever they can.
Yep, they'll get what they can.
You guys won't, you're, it's almost like they're hurt.
Right.
They're gonna leave the stuff. They don't give crap.
Yeah, we're looking to-
They don't give a crap about the stuff.
Yeah, we're looking to get, like I said, this ditch has been there since nineteen ninety is when Mill Street had the curb gutter redone and such like that. So unfortunately, there has not been much, so basically it just needs to have a clean cut.
To the next, uh, Public Works?
Yeah, totally, it can. Yep. Um-
Yeah, let's discuss it, then.
Sure. So going on with that, one of the things that was a positive was, uh, a lot of those on the r- phone with D O T is they said that the crossing at seventy-eight is actually on the radar for twenty-one or twenty-two. And that was one of the things in the survey we had was questions about that, and just from hearsay around the community, people starting to complain about how bad that crossing's getting. Um, speed boards are up, and I believe the police tried to download the software. They were not capable.
Cartman contacted them.
I can try. I don't think iPad's gonna work. Okay.
iPad would work, too.
Okay, I can, I can look into it.
If I try, if I don't, I can get ahold of them, help them.
Okay. Um, ATV signage, I did get a reply from that, from D O T, saying that we need to change some verbiage. And Shelley, you got that, and Mitch, you got that as well, as far as ordinance items. Um, so that can be something that, that's Public Works as well, on the signs, yep, on the signs.
Not on the ordinance.
So, other than that, I did a walk with Brian and Nick from Town and Country on Stephen Bar Perrell's ditch. We have some stormwater easement out there, and that's looking like that's something that needs to be tended to as well. Has not been cleaned out for fifteen years type deal, so just a maintenance item.
Are these items, uh, we can perform within our current budget, or we need to?
Nope, these will be kind of long-term budget.
Our capabilities are-
Yep. We do have some set aside for stormwater, so once we start getting those, you know, budgets and quotes together, we can establish what needs to be done.
It just needs to be dredged, now, Stephen Bar.
Is that our, the Blomons, is that better?
Yep, so there's two ditches that run there, and, um, I know Brian had some of the paperwork to me, which kinda seems not totally true with what Stephen Bar had, but-
Since we've dredged that?
Two thousand and four.
Yeah. So-
Yeah, it's probably still red.
Um, so, yeah, that's all I got. Any, any questions for anyone?
Questions for Matt?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Matt. Uh, six I Parks Committee, Josh.
Um, so I can take that. There was no Parks Committee meeting, uh, next meeting. Are we good, Troy?
Yeah, well, I can stop this.
Yep, absolutely.
Please. Okay. Black Earth's, uh, Village, February second, Parks Committee, so, Village of Parks Committee report.
Okay.
Ashley.
Uh, there was no me- meeting for the month of January. A question I have, and Shelley, you're probably still waiting. Have you heard anything from FEMA for park items?
No.
Okay.
Uh-uh.
Okay. Uh, so next meeting will be February seventeenth at six P M.
All right, thank you, Matt. Uh, six J Police Committee, James.
The Police Committee meeting met on January fourteenth. I don't have my minutes, so whatever I don't, not able to cover, I'm gonna have to get back to the next meeting. Um, I don't have the police reports for November, but I believe we had twenty-seven citations. And I'm going on that because, um, we asked about court and how that all worked. And, uh, so not all, we haven't been getting citations and stuff, or getting no information back. We know that the citations they write in the village go there, but not all of them do. So there is a ten, we had twenty-seven citations, so it's possible that only twenty-two went to there, and the rest went to Dane County. So they do write tickets that go to county, just to let everybody know, and then once they go to Mesa. But it's not very often that they do that.
D U Is and stuff like that.
Yeah.
D U Is could even go local depending on the fence.
They don't want them to.
They don't want them to?
They don't want them to.
I don't remember that.
So, um, so that's it for reports. Um, we talked a lot about the ordinances, and we've been talking about the ordinances need to be thin out and rewrote and some changed.
Got into a big discussion on excrement.
Yeah.
Should say solid.
No. But it doesn't.
It should.
Excrement is one thing.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. So, we, we had many discussions on that. So the Police Department, or the Police Analyst Committee is really looking-
Can we write into that ordinance? Don't eat the yellow stone.
Um, we had some issues with towing vehicles for ordinances, too. That's the one where they couldn't, they had to use a couple different ordinances to, to do it, I guess. Um, we did send the light bar and an old speed board to the Wisconsin surplus Matt was talking about. And, um, for future agendas, we need to discuss, uh, contract issues and, um, contacting lawyer. I don't, we didn't-
Does this discuss contract issues to the board?
Yeah, we did not discuss-
The police committee?
Police Committee needs to. We did not get to discuss it because it was not on the agenda at the time. So that will be an issue.
Is the contract due up? Or is there contract discussion?
No, um, contract issues are being brought up by the police officers. And, but we, we, as the village board, need, or have to discuss if we wanna, their contract is coming up in-
It automatically renews. I actually think it's next month in part.
So if we do wanna talk about it, um, it needs to be talked about.
Any details by village meeting then, to do anything in April, needs something first of March.
Cause we'd have to, yeah, we'd have to really, is there any interest in?
I don't understand it, would it?
We think we did it, so I don't know what we are.
The board needs to be changed.
Okay.
They have. And I guess tonight, now is not really the time, but I mean, we're gonna discuss it.
Could put it in the future, yeah, that's right, yeah.
Scott, you do the next meeting next?
It's gonna be the tenth, February tenth. It was moved from the eleventh to the tenth.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's it. At one P M, right? No, the police is five.
Yeah.
All right, any questions for James?
Yes, I have some questions. Um, James, were there any motions, um, that the Police Committee passed regarding the concerns of the deputies?
I don't actually have my notes. I mean, that's what I, but I don't think there was anything.
I don't remember actually being taken on anything.
Was there, there was a, oh, I'm sorry. Can you repeat the question?
I said, were there any motions regarding, uh, that the Police Committee passed regarding the deputy's concerns from the topic items on the agenda?
Well, specifically, what are you talking about specifically?
The ones where, um, James Cartman and Michelle Vinnie presented their, um, concerns in the form of topics on the Police Committee agenda. I mean-
The committee would have to bring that into the board for anything to go any farther.
Right. I was just wondering if there was, it's under action discussion, so I was wondering if there was any motion that was passed on their concerns to bring it to the board.
Without my notes, I honestly can't tell you, but I, I don't believe so. But if, if there is, I will definitely let you know now.
We didn't have anything. We didn't have anything in their action items, so.
I didn't see anything there to carry over.
There wasn't anything there.
And then what, well, what is the plan to bring these concerns then to the village board? Um, I know that we're talking about recodification, and I know there's a lot of conflicting ordinances, and I think everybody's agreed that it needs a good look through. But in the interim, um, for deputy's support, how are we supporting our deputies with kind of the, the, the three areas that I recall?
Not bringing, um, information to the village board?
Yes.
What are you trying to get? I mean, they can do their job by using the different ordinances like they had to. I mean, they had to do it. So in the meantime, that's what they're gonna have to do is use maybe more than one ordinance, or, I don't know what you're asking, otherwise.
That's what I'm asking. I'm asking what, yeah, I'm asking how it was rectified, their concerns were rectified. Um, use multiple different ordinances and-
I think those concerns are ongoing till we, till we get our, have these ordinance discussions and-
Well, we laid down an ordinance from Mesa meeting about dog feces, then they laid down our ordinance, and we got to talk about that. And we didn't make any action on it because we're gonna, we were in the middle of codifying our ordinances. So there's no action taken. There was a lot of lively discussion.
I'm not sure, but-
I don't remember taking any action or making any. Who you been talking to?
Oh, I was at the Police Committee meeting, but I couldn't hear very well, so, I mean, I did it by Zoom. So it was kind of breaking in and breaking out, and I just wanted some clarification on what happened at the end of their agenda items.
Yeah, I don't believe there was anything else.
All right. Anything else for James?
Uh, agenda item seven.
What do we have?
Item seven. Discussion action regarding the judge board minutes of January fifth, twenty twenty-one.
And I just note that we did forget something on the draft minutes in front of you. And that was under item number five, when we had the discussion on the Library Board Committee assignment. Um, the motion from Patchen, and seconded by Mary, to postpone the Library Board reassignment, and the motion passed is missing from what you see. We found that. So now that as you go through the rest of the minutes, it needs to be amended to include that. All right.
We need a motion to amend that?
Yeah.
I can't find where you're looking. I think I missed the first part of that. Where are we looking?
Under item number five on the minutes, at the second page, where we were discussing the Library Board Committee assignment.
Uh-huh.
Under section B, at the very bottom, we forgot to include the motion that was made. So the minutes need to be amended to include the motion that Scott Patchen made and you seconded. So.
Can you repeat the motion, then?
Patchen, Scott, motion to postpone the Library Board reassignment, and the motion passed. So that is something for future agenda items, if you're great back.
I think since we're amending it to, the postponements need to either have an, a definite or indefinite date. And it doesn't say either for that. It's, it's not defined. Since we're on that topic.
The motion passed, or what?
The motion passed, yeah. To postpone it, but there's no timeframe. That's something we'll have to, on the future agenda items, if we're gonna talk.
So we don't have any stuff?
Indefinitely. Any stuff, indefinitely postpone.
Yeah.
Indefinitely.
It just has to reflect indefinitely in the minutes.
Yeah.
I would move that we change that to include the motion in the second, as well as the count. Uh, both count, A's and A's, with the amended, what we, what we just get that.
Postponed?
The, yeah. Yeah, and postponing is indefinite.
I'll second. And that was for all the minutes? Okay, so we have a motion by Scott, a second by Troy, any discussion on the minutes from?
Yes, I've got, um, some modifications in the minutes too. But I don't know via Zoom how to do it more efficiently.
Just read them, so it's verbal, we'll, we'll get it.
Okay, so under Gary Schutz, I think there needs to be some clarification. Um, under the third line.
Okay, which part, cause Gary spoke quite a few times throughout the meeting.
Under public comment, thank you for clarifying that. Under public comment number two, the third line, he said, I thank the board for appointing her to this role and, um, he didn't say I support the decision, he said I encourage. So, and I encourage you to keep her in the role after next election. And then tell me when you have that part done.
Gary, does that sound like?
I was gonna say, did that, that sounds like something I'd say.
It's taken from his speech, so it's just a verbatim inclusion, just to make it more specific. Certainly, he supported the decision, but then he also said that.
Okay, thank you, next.
Okay, and then, under line number one, two, three, four, five, where it starts with mediation information.
Are we still under Gary?
Yes, this is all Gary.
Okay.
So then, he said, um, so before that says Mary was instructed to share. Then you should put the statement on library authority and autonomy. And mediation information.
I don't understand.
So we want Gary's complete report or?
Uh, that would be really helpful because, you know.
We got a hand raised.
I don't know, I'd be sitting here.
Gary?
So i- if it would be helpful, um, I could probably find that and submit it if, if you wanted to print it in the, the minutes.
I think we're gonna.
I, I can show you sort of that is not verbatim what I said, but it's really, really close.
A lot of it doesn't change what's written down here, doesn't change the meaning of what you said.
If, if that would help you out, I'm happy to do that. And if that addresses Mary's concerns, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Anything else, Mary?
Yep, then under, on five, under B, M. Scott reads prepared statement. Would you also rather have a copy of my speech then too? And then it would just take.
Yeah, but remember, yeah, I'd love to have that, but I wanna make sure everyone realizes that the minutes, as long as we have the intent, I not, the intent is not to publish every single word from everything. No, we do our best, but if the intention is off, then we'll correct it for sure.
Right, certainly not, and I understand that. But there's some points that I think for the record are important, um, moving forward, and so I'd like to make those changes. And I can submit those changes to you, they're highlighted in yellow, um, on my copy, but I don't know how to do it today. So, or I mean, I don't know how to do it for this purpose right now, but do you want me just to read it and then people can hear it or?
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea, cause I don't want anything to get missed, I'm sorry.
Okay.
All right, um, Scott, as far as your motion, do you wanna change your motion?
Do you just want me to send it in or you want me to read it right now? I'm unclear what you were asking.
But I think Shelley wants to read the record, right?
That's what I thought.
I really don't know how to deal with it. I've never accepted written speeches before in changes minutes.
It's changing words because there are a couple of words that are incorrect.
Mary, is the intent there in our minutes? And what is, what your main basic concern about the future of not getting in what you wanna get in? That's my question. Is our intent not there in the minutes?
I think there are a couple areas where I think it's, it's not.
They will be monumental in our future.
Yes, I feel it would be, yes.
Cause you feel it would be, can you give me a definite?
Can you get the rest of the board a reason?
Um, because it more describes what my speech was about. And it better describes the situation that we found ourselves in and where we're headed from there. And I think that it was, there's a couple areas that I think were incorrect. So that's why I'm bringing it up. I know they are, yes.
So do we table this or do we post?
Table it, just table it till you get it done. Actually, I make a motion, we postpone the draft minutes until we get all the information and put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
All right, so Scott's a motion with my seconds off the table. Regist, motion is.
And I, if you need a second, you got my second.
To postpone till the next board meeting.
All right, so a motion by Mitch, second by Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion back to unanimous.
Please send me what you have, Mary, and thank you.
Will do, thanks.
Intended on eight, discussion action treasures report to December twenty twenty, Shelley.
Okay. Shouldn't we see by email this afternoon the revenue and expenses for the village, but going through your financials for the month? The treasures report is through December twenty twenty on audit at this time. Uh, we have finished, uh, tax collections at this point, uh, in the month of January, I should say, we just wrapped that up today. Collected over three million and, in, sorry, two point one million in taxes. And as of December's treasures report, we are sitting with a little over three million in all of our accounts. Um, we have seventy-two percent of taxes were collected in December and January here in the village. Where it's been almost being known that we are supposed to cut. January tax settlements, um, came out, uh, you're gonna see in January treasures report, some of that money market tax account is gonna fluctuate over the next couple of months as we do tax settlements. January tax settlement, February tax settlement. Um, we typically will see anywhere from five hundred to eight hundred thousand going out the door for those settlements in those months. So be prepared to see that change on that report. Um, going through our revenue and expenses, um, one of the reasons it took me a little longer to get this out is I did have to update this with twenty twenty-one budget numbers. And tie it into our software system, you know, across the fund. Our general fund, it's pretty early in the year, I mean, we're expected to be about eight percent to budget already for January. But in the general fund, you know, revenues are sitting at a little over one percent with expenses at a little over three percent. And we won't start seeing a lot of funds come in until really the first quarter of transportation is coming in and whatnot. We are seeing, of course, some new home construction and the building permit, uh, revenues. I believe there's two new homes that were permitted out, dog fees are going very well as well. Um, electrical revenues are sitting at a little over seven percent, about seven point eight percent with expenses at three percent. We don't have Vanguard's January bills in yet. Water revenues are at six point seven percent, so expenses at two point three percent. Sewer revenues are sitting at nine percent and expenses at one percent. Um, again, too early in the year to see a whole lot going on. I will tell you, uh, we do have, like I said, the four audits are going on. We have a workman's comp audit going on, we have the P S C billing audit on the electrical, and of course, we have the village and library audits that ha- are ongoing. We've already started, uh, the teams will be out here the end of February. So in three weeks, we will see a couple people come out from the audit team and information has been sent out. The P S C billing audit, Vanguard Electric is helping, um, fulfill their request on meter testing issues. And we've already uploaded half of their data. And then the workman's comp audit is just about wrapped up, they're just gonna verify subcontractors living hopefully before the end of this week. Um, other than that, we are just tying up in twenty twenty years, we have general funds for other items for our regular audit. That's what I have for your financials right now.
So, what, I wanna talk about attorney bills.
You gonna do that when we get to invoices?
Okay.
I'll move to through the December twenty twenty treasures report.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by Mitch, more discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass this agenda item, non discussion action invoices to be paid.
All right. They also handed out a supplemental invoices to pay that came out from the report with them.
Quill corporation, do we, are we, I don't know, it's just paper, but are we docking up or is that, is that printed, is that printed correctly?
Is that split up?
Well, my question is definitely.
Yeah, yeah, no, so quill for our supplies get, gets split out between all of our funds, that's why you see so many things that are listed in there. And when you see like paper towel and toilet paper, we can only order one box at a time. They will not let us order any more than that for our facilities.
Well, then let's get into sort of industry.
We can, that I might be better just to go over to Costco and pick it up.
They'll let you take one at a time too. It's hard to cover, guys, hard to cover.
So that, you know.
I can't believe a company would only, was limiting the one to a set of.
They were not limiting us up until, uh, I think it was November that they started doing a limit.
So is it per customer or per venue? Because we could say, you know, part of the whole department.
Didn't go every day.
A billion dollars.
You can order it every day.
I can go back in two days and get more people.
Mm-hmm. That's the same way, you go tomorrow and get another robot, you can't get.
So that's why you'll see paper towel or.
Everybody's doing it, so.
Yeah, I know, because really I have to order it. And it comes in as a different invoice.
So you can't place a monthly order with the one?
Yeah.
We have, uh.
That's just right now, I mean, that's not normally, that's.
No.
Do you have Amazon price?
Beginning of the year, I will order a box of the.
Whole case for the time.
Through the least, halfway through the year.
I'll let you buy a case.
Okay.
All right, just letting you know. So, good question.
How much is a case of toilet paper?
Oh, my God.
Oh, no, no. Hundred and thirteen dollars.
Eighty-six rolls, I just, I'm just interested.
I didn't tell you that.
Twenty-two seventy-four.
What is it?
Right, and the least one is twenty-two seventy-four.
That's the big rolls, right?
To tell toilet paper.
Oh, you're talking about the industrial rolls, the fitted size?
Yeah, yeah, they're the big rolls.
Never mind, I wouldn't know what that cost, but it's, well, that'd be hard.
Five double toilet tissue, they, so they come forward to a case, they're thirty-five dollars a carton.
Okay. Oh, we're not getting home, okay.
Um, one of, one of the, we have eight hundred, almost eight hundred dollar legal bill.
Yeah.
Um, Mary, you wanna explain that one to us? That was from your call to the attorney, which my attorney says I don't have the right legally to do that, so I'm trying to figure that out.
I'm sorry, what was that part?
So there's almost an eight hundred dollar legal fee that has to do with your call to our attorney that was not pre-approved by the board to spend the money. And consulting with my attorney, I can't legally do that. So I'm trying to figure out how we approve that bill if it wasn't approved.
Um, the attorney said that I could talk to him, and so I said that after trying to reach out to get the agenda amended so that it wasn't in violation of open meetings, um, laws, um, that he was the resource to reach out to, that there were problems with how it was listed. I wasn't on the phone with him for seven hundred and thirty dollars worth, so I'm not quite sure what the follow-up entailed. But then there was another concern also of, um, informa- am I supposed to give details or not?
No, but, you know, the problem is, you don't have the authority to bring that upon the village as a board member by yourself.
That's correct.
And I think he should have told me that when I called, but I was concerned about.
Whoever, he's not gonna turn down anybody from the village, that, that's a law, though, I mean.
But he's supposed to be representing the village, so if it was an error, he should have told me that that's the way it's supposed to be. And I tried to reach out.
And preach that to these people that they need approval to go to the attorney and then you go turn around and do what you've been preaching against.
The invoice, well, it was to protect us from being in violation of open meeting laws, which is really severe, following not recording minutes for, was it, three years? And there's still, you know, I, I tried and I tried to reach out to Troy and was not given. And was not given the authority.
To be brought to the attorney, to do it on your own.
Then the attorney was not advising properly and should have told me that that was something that needs to go through the board first. They are, they are our legal representation.
Well, they don't need to tell you where you stand, you have no authority to go on your own outside of this village board to spend taxpayer dollars on our attorney.
But that portion is not broken down.
Your own attorney, you can spend as much money as you want.
Or the free service of the league.
You can use the league attorney.
Yeah.
And I did contact. I did contact the league first and I did ask them, but they cannot give legal advice and they said that I needed to contact the village attorney if I couldn't get it resolved.
They give legal advice.
They do it all the time, but.
They, no, they don't, they consistently say we cannot give legal advice, your, um, attorney is the one that you need to consult. So I tried to get clarity, I tried to have the minutes posted, even as the agenda was amended, was still not clear, um, what was being discussed. And this all could have been avoided if I would have gotten the information and they would have been willing, Troy and Shelley would have been willing to modify the agenda to be transparent as to what was going to be discussed. And seven hundred and thirty-two dollars was not spent on my time with them, but it says and follow-up. So how much time was spent on the follow-up of those two issues that had to do with our village?
It's amazing how you skirt things, it's amazing how you frame things, it's never you. I, I don't get it.
So I, I, you know, and just in hindsight here, and I know it's easy, Mary, but I would have actually came to the board and said, hey, this is really what I found by doing some research and, and that, you know, I think that we need to postpone this till your next meeting, cause it wasn't posted right or something. Or I would ask my attorney, I have an attorney, I don't have the right to go out and build the village.
I did reach out to everybody when I asked what, what these items were, what committee, what committee, um, reassignment meant. And then I was given a two-word answer to that, and then the other two questions had limited information. And when I reached out a second time, I was not given any information. Then when the amendment came through, it was clear to me that, yes, they did take the legal advice of the village attorney so that you could thwart an open meetings violation. So that's important, but that it didn't need to go that way, I agree with you, if the village president. If the village president saw the agenda the way it is supposed to be seen as a place for people to appear for pertinent information that's in the best interest of the village and be transparent in the way that it's recorded on the agenda, then I agree that this would go a lot more smoothly, 'cause it has caused a lot of problem, a lot of problems. Um, also repeatedly mislabeling the library board as a library committee and some such. It, they're just, things were not being labeled properly, they're not being noticed properly, and that is a point of transparency which is paramount. And I didn't see.
Doesn't give you the right to bring debt on the village.
I'm sorry?
It does not, it does not give you the right to bring debt onto the taxpayer.
But that's what he said was my option, was to talk to him about it. So if the attorney gave bad information, we should ask him for the money back then. You're saying he'll take money from anybody, so somebody from the public can call him and say, let's talk, and he'll talk to him, that's a bad representation. We can't have an attorney like that that will just flagrantly take any phone call from anyone and charge the village. If I was not in my rights with those two major issues that concerned him enough to contact the village right away, I don't know how long the village was on the phone with him or how many calls it took to get to seven hundred and thirty dollars, but my call with him did not take out.
Not many.
Yeah, but your phone call triggered a bunch of activity, Mary.
Yep.
But I tried, Troy, did I reach out to you and CC everybody on the board about my concerns about the transparency of that agenda, did I not? And was it not listed as a library, or, I'm sorry, a committee assignments? And when I asked what committee assignments meant, your answer back was library board. And then when I said, what of the library board business, you would not respond, you never responded back. So what am I supposed to do? You are supposed to give a trustee all the information that they need to come prepared to a meeting so that they can discuss intelligently and why.
The information was in the packet.
The information was in the packet, I don't get it.
So anyways, we gotta approve invoices, right? I don't know what to do with that portion of it, I'm thinking about approving everything but.
Yeah, I would go ahead and approve all them, I would make the motion to approve invoices presented except for that attorney bill. Um, we're gonna have to find out who's got a big enough checkbook to buy, you know, take care of that, I guess. Be my motion.
All right, we have a motion on.
Well, I don't think that that is very transparent, and I don't think it details exactly what you're getting at. If the attorney's not supposed to be taking a call, and he took the call, then he needs to lump it.
Any more discussion on the invoices that presented?
That is the discussion, I'm telling you that if the attorney was not supposed to take.
We're not discussing that, we're discussing whether we're gonna approve the invoices or not.
Yes, and Pa- and Scott Patchen left it very open-ended as to what he meant by what checkbook and biggest, I mean, we need to be very specific. That's not specific. Why not to include that invoice item without being specific as to why or your intent going forward is irresponsible.
I'm gonna amend my motion to say that you didn't have the authority to contact our village attorney.
And the village attorney accepted the call, and therefore, the burden is his, since he accepted the call, you're not giving him the credit that he deserves as an attorney of the state of Wisconsin, representing our community.
Come here. That's one opinion, we'll see all the rest of the board feels about it.
What are we doing with invoices?
So we have a motion to pay the, all the invoice that's presented except for the.
Except for Act Please.
Act Please. And a second. So, uh.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna do the court one.
Yeah.
Yes, so it's the seven hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
So, is.
Okay, Jared.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask then, is there gonna be some kind of follow-up to discuss that, 'cause that just leaves a bill outstanding, right?
It'll be put on next month.
Put it on next month's agenda.
Okay.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Agenda item ten, any other business that may be brought before the board on future agenda?
I know this is in progress, but I would like to put on the agenda to postpone the library audit on the next month and delay it, I know it's in progress, but delay it at this point.
I will second that. Or, or you wanna put it on there?
It's gonna be on the agenda.
Yeah, it'll be on, why made the motion, put it, or, don't make the motion, right?
Anything else?
Yes. Um, I'd like to add the attorney selection process to the next, it was supposed to be on this one. And so when we're looking at, uh, different, um, law firms, I'd like to add that to the next agenda item.
So, I, okay, I, I.
I'm gonna stop right there, all of you, you ordered me to take it out for an RFP for a labor and employment attorney last month. Those went out to several different firms.
Yeah.
We're waiting for them to come in.
We came to that line of, yeah.
So.
The question is, we're only doing labor attorney, right?
Yeah, we determined that we did, we were.
Okay, so, I, I know that the judge was asked if he wanted to be part of selecting a new attorney and or changing ordinances, which is illegal, 'cause the judge has to be neutral and can't be part of that. So I, I was a little confused, I thought we were looking for a new attorney for our court system, too.
Yeah.
Well, what was discussed last meeting was to find a two-in-one, because it's most commonly done that your main attorney is the one that represents the village and on anything specific like COVID-like items, um.
Yeah.
That you, he then goes to a colleague that specializes in that, or he or she, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of Bill Colby and he. Um, that he or she goes to that, that it's not typical, um, to have two separate law firms. Um, but that I made it very clear last meeting that we could go shopping for an entire new law firm if that's what is needed. Um, or if that's what's beneficial to the village, um, and combine those two in one. So I, at no point was that in my mind or by my statement that's recorded, um, just a labor attorney, I just wanna be clear.
Okay, you, you do realize asking the judge to be part of an attorney that's gonna represent the village is a conflict, right?
Uh, no, I was wondering if there is some input that he had for attorneys, but when he explained that, it totally made.
Absolutely cannot be involved.
That totally made sense after he explained it. Um, I thought we were supposed to be researching different firms, and then I did mention also that I would go through the list on, um, Wisconsin League of Municipalities and try and find what I described as like a Better Business Bureau list of attorneys. There is no such thing there, but there are lists of the twenty twenty-one's best attorneys, municipal attorneys of Dane County, and that was an interesting resource of three or four different attorneys that, um, were highly valued enough to get from one or two, from two different law firms. So I thought we were supposed to be shopping for that.
Because there's.
Because we have a union.
Of interest, or what?
No.
No, no.
No, you could do one.
I mean, we've always used two, but as far as I know, I'm, I mean, you guys are on.
I know, there's always a little, right, because I think we use attorneys in the village and they weren't labor attorneys.
Oh, okay.
I think.
So the, the art, the request already went out for the labor attorney.
So then after some other events, we've shopped for a different lawyer, then now Ashley might actually have that capability.
And that's what.
That's true.
And that's exactly what Shelley said, she listed off, uh, under Boardman Clark, Steve, or something with the last name K or something like that that she had worked with once before. Um, Village Across Plains uses Boardman Clark, they use Paul Johnson, though, and, um, then they use this, I think his name is Steve, um, for labor attorney specific stuff which they ran into during COVID. And then, um.
We have that information beyond the agenda, but we're getting way off, this is, we're just.
It will be on the agenda.
Deadline.
It'll be on the agenda.
Perfect. Then there's another item, too, after this.
Okay.
Uh, Roberts Rule came out with volume number twelve, it came out in twenty twenty, um, and there are, um, changes, especially considering or concerning electronic submissions or electronically recorded or electronically attended meetings. And so I was wondering if with all these changes, um, and with us needing to be privy to how meetings are run and kinda get a better breast, a better gist of our jobs as trustees, um, would we, um, vote to or consider, um, each trustee receiving a copy of the Roberts Rule, um, at least on bar ownership? You know, um, if not a personal copy?
Put Roberts Rules on the agenda, Mary?
Now, put Roberts Rules on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. That's reasonable.
Yeah.
Probably on, probably take it on, you'll do.
Okay.
Oh, do we, can we have, do we have?
Yeah, you guys want to do it, maybe.
Oh. Yeah, so there is, we're, oh, we're looking to, to have a trustee training session. And so inquiring about whether we want to have that on a separate night or on a village board meeting night.
It's, um, the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, our insurance carrier on this, uh, has offered to come in and do some free risk and liability training to our board members with examples that have happened in other communities, and I think it's a fantastic idea. It's a free service, um.
Probably at least a half hour, so.
Yeah, maybe not a half hour.
And after the board meeting, might put in another night.
It may be that the library board may want to join in on it.
Well, there'll be a lot of questions, it'd be a good time to put the two boards together.
Yeah.
It'd be a good initial, what do you think?
Do a supper night, it's my understanding this is, yes.
So, are we preparing to set a special date?
They're looking for a date from us that we can maybe work.
Can I add to that, though, too, because I have the League of Municipalities Local Government One-O-One Workshop and, um, some of the books that were ordered, um, that you can rent from the library, Conduct of Village Board Meetings and Powers and Duties of Wisconsin Village Board Presidents, and then another one, So You Want to be an Elected Official. If they'll come in and do the risk assessment, training, then perhaps they would do the rest of these, or the trustees can also be encouraged to check the boxes by renting out the lockers.
Mary, Mary, it's our insurance agent, the league's, league's insurance agent that does the insurance risk training. It's a little different than the one that you're looking at. It's separate, I mean, even though they all have the League of Wisconsin Municipalities behind them, one is the insurance and one is the regular league people.
You're saying.
People that learn set a date.
You're saying that they don't, that they don't go further than in, uh, for any sort of a local government workshop?
They do, but it won't be this one, right?
It, it won't be this one. This is insurance.
Okay.
Um, what do we do, do we try to set a date? If we get all the meeting information provided tonight, updated in our calendar within the next couple of days, and then we come back to you with potential dates?
Yeah.
As far as what night, so there's, how's that?
Um, the one day we have to leave, we have elections February sixteenth, so I know that that's not enough.
You make it out here.
You want to, do you invite the labor board?
I, I think so, right, I mean, it's good information for everybody.
How about time, six P M. Okay, or?
I'm lost.
Sounds good with me.
Anytime's fine.
Jerry, as far as the, uh, members of the library board, you think?
Uh, I would be interested in attending that, and I was gonna ask Shelley if she could e- email me the, the information on it and copy first in. And, and I could certainly present that to them, my only concern would be getting too many people in one room.
Well, it could do so maybe online, too, right, in-line room and online.
That's, that's the only concern I have.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Actually, you could just, yeah, do it, had the camera face them, and then wouldn't have to be in here. It's really hard to be.
We could probably do a virtual, yeah.
Yeah, we could do a zoomer.
At the very least, I would, I would like to be included in communication, get a, to inform the information about what the court, that would be a great thing.
Approximately time, though, six, seemed to work for most of the members.
The only problem would be the person working. Aren't you guys open till seven, or?
This would be for board.
This is the board.
Board members.
Oh, the library board, okay, not employment, oh, yeah. Whatever. Okay, wait.
I moved to adjourn.
Second.
Wait, there's one more item that we didn't, that, there's one more item after that.
What's that, Mary?
For future meetings.
Okay.
Next meeting date?
Uh, March second.
Are we doing future meeting, one more future meeting, uh, I'm sorry, one more item to be heard at future agendas? That went really fast from that last training thing into the other, so there's one more.
Well, the training thing was meeting announcements, sorry.
Huh?
Training thing was on, under meeting announcements? So we have a next board meeting March second, and then the training meeting.
I think she's asking for something else.
Is there something else you want on the agenda?
Was not done with number ten.
Pardon? Do you have something else for number ten?
Yes, there was one more thing under number ten.
Okay.
Is it okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, I've been approached by several, um, constituents of the village and others, and, um, they are requesting that the village board verify the residence of the village president, and so I'd like that to be on the next agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
I get a motion in a second.
Okay. Uh, agenda item twelve.
Experiment?
We have a motion at a second, are we ready? Nine oh two, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, have a good night.
All right.
Thank you, Jared, thanks, guys.